All right, so I'm going to call the meetings order. First, I think is to review and approve the agenda. There had been some discussion, not, there was not much of a discussion. Someone had suggested to me that we, since Ashley Hill is not here, that she was particularly interested in the item number 12, the Social Economic Quality Committee. I think we can have a conversation about it and see if we want to take some steps forward there. So I'm inclined to leave it unless people feel we want to wait. Another thing, too, to consider is that, again, Ashley's not here and we are scheduled to do committee appointments. She did tell me, you know, sign me up for whatever, which...
(laughing).
It's all solved.
What? What committee does no one want? Graves! You signed up for one. So what are your thoughts on keeping or leaving that one?
Well, I already had my bias. I would really like us to discuss this within our retreat, but...
So I would rather persuade.
You'd rather persuade other opinions about this? Are there things that we need to appoint? Well, I did notice the most updated list doesn't have Glenn on the Building Appeals Committee, and we did make a motion on that, so if we can just update that one. To me, that's the, that may have...
One that may actually have action.
And our retreat is...
For another month.
Yeah, so are we...
How much trouble is it to take someone off the committee and put them back on?
Not hard.
Is it possible to do the appointments tonight as needed and then come back to them at the retreat?
Sure.
Is that acceptable?
Was the issue for the retreat actually appointing people or the role of committees?
Well, I think as a new board member, council member, I was just surprised so early in my term, we did committees, when I didn't know that much about committees. And so I felt it would benefit everyone to have a more holistic view of the committees, that's all.
Yeah. That's fair. I guess maybe we should keep it tonight and then revisit it at the retreat? Does that sound...
We can even revisit it next meeting if Ashley's here.
Okay. That sounds great. If we can make a note of that, just to have it on the agenda again, just to... Or maybe we can just touch base with Ashley and see how she feels.
See where we get to.
Okay. Cool. I just wanted to make sure that we brought that up, so... Forget the word words, but we're going to consider that without objection, approved. There we go. And so, general business and appearances. So this is time for anyone from the public to make a comment about any topic that is not on our agenda. So if you would please say your name and your street.
I stand up first. I'm going to be the first one to go, just after you, so get your guys going. My name's Carrie Clement. I live on Evans Street in Montpelier, and I'm representing the Montpelier downsizing group. So it's mostly because there are two new members here, and I thought I would say something about what our group is. We are about, database about 200 people who want to downsize into smaller homes, market rate primarily, and would like to be able to request that a future agenda topic. The market rate housing for, doesn't necessarily seniors, but that tends to be who our group is comprised of. Also, we formed a smaller core group of about seven to eight households that are really pushing this forward, and they meet at my house, and you know, we meet pretty regularly, you know, every couple of weeks. So we're in the process of discussing forming an LLC and being able to move this forward. Some of us may be able to come to future meetings if that is requested, but anyway, so requesting a future agenda piece, thanks.
Carrie, can I ask you a question about that?
Sure.
Do you have a preferred timeline for when you would want to see something?
Yeah, soon.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I mean, this has been, this is going on for years as a group. We've had meetings at the library, we've had, you know, of a larger group. They've been also available through OCA has phoned them. So this is something that is pretty critical for a lot of people, you know, who have wanted to downsize. We had a survey that we conducted, and they want to downsize between six months and three, four years, and every, every year it's tighter and tighter. So a lot of it is that there are a lot of affordable, you know, rentals and housing coming up, and those with deep pockets, you know, they go out of Wigg Robin, you know. But those of us in the middle just don't have a whole lot available, couldn't qualify for affordable, but we still would like to remain in the city. And people who have moved out of city because they just don't have any options. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Donna?
A staff question related to that. I had the survey because I was on your mailing list, but did we have that copy distributed for the whole council?
I don't know if we do or not.
I haven't, yeah, I mean, I...
Okay, because I, we want all our new council members to get it. It was a very good survey.
Could you just send that to me, Carrie?
Sure.
That'd be great, and then we can send it out, put it in the...
Distributed to whoever would be interested.
Be in touch about scheduling the agenda, what specific we want to cover.
Well, and then, too, I'd love that document to live in our Google Drive, something that we can cover how to access.
And we've got the price of property, so maybe there's something that we can just going forward, when we can actually reveal, you know, where we are with those.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else? Okay. All right, so consideration of the consent agenda.
You just mentioned that I did fix the date on the minutes.
Great, thank you. Donna?
Don't we have a swearing in to do?
Oh, that's...
I've already been sworn in.
Oh, you've been sworn in.
Oh!
I missed it. Fair enough. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you for that, Donna. So going back to the consent agenda, so there are motions.
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? No one wants to pull anything? Okay, no discussion? All right. Favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So we have a series of appointments to make. So the first one is to the MTIC, Montpelier Transportation Infrastructure Committee. And I believe for this one, we have, sorry?
We have one vacancy?
One person applying.
One person applying. Is Ian here?
Would you like to come up and introduce yourself? Tell us about your interest in this committee? So again, say your name and your street.
Hi, my name's Ian Anderson. I live on Hill Street. I applied for the appointment to the Montpelier Transportation Infrastructure Committee. Pretty new to town, but have, you know, been interested in getting involved. I am a civil engineer by practice. I finished up a PhD at the University of Vermont in November. I've recently moved here to take a position at the agency of transportation. So a bit of a background in transportation and just looking to get involved.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to nominate Ivan Anderson.
Ian, Ian.
Ian, Ian, excuse me.
Second. Further discussion? On paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Congratulations, Ian. Thank you for considering.
First Tuesday, 6:00.
All right, the Design Review Committee.
Also has one slot. Hannah Smith is seeking reappointment.
He's not here. So, or not?
I'll make a motion to appoint Hannah Smith.
Second. Donna?
I had a question about the terms, and I meant to do it before the last appointment. In August, when we do the alignment of the Planning Commission, the one thing the committee on committees didn't yet get to was looking at the appointment dates and getting them all aligned, and when we reappoint someone to fill a position, they don't automatically get a two-year, but they... So I'm just looking at all the dates on this committee, and everybody's September, but this one, is there any way we can align this appointment up with September?
I think with this one you can. This is not a charter-driven, so the Planning Commission, DRB, were set by charter, and we're waiting for that charter change to go through the legislature so we can actually do it. I believe, and I probably, you might want to just make sure we're correct on this, but DRC, I think, is set by our own rules and procedures, not, there's no terms in the charter, I don't think. So if there's not, then we can, we can set the dates of the terms. I just don't know whether it's an ordinance amendment or... So I'd like to get, do a little more research on the DRC terms, but I believe you can do. So I can, I can...
So we should just leave it as it is for now and come back to it?
I would, and then we could always amend it, even at the next meeting. I'll make a note here to check on DRC terms. I don't think it's, you know, it's like going to be extensive to find this out, but I just wouldn't want to do it on the fly, make sure we have it right.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? So Donna, you're happy?
Yep.
Okay. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Congratulations, Hannah. All right, the Tree Board.
Tree Board has three slots seeking appointment. Two existing members, Abby Colahan and Lynn Wild, are seeking reappointment, and there's a vacant slot, and Janet Wormser is seeking a vacant slot.
Is there a motion? Are there any of them here? Yeah, okay. Second. Great, any other discussion?
It's the same thing about dates.
Check on that one, too.
Okay, that's not just one of ours, some are these...
I think it is, but again, I just...
Okay, okay. So I won't bring it up again, we'll just check on the dates, okay.
Sounds good. Actually, just one question about that. When, when would we hear back about that? The next time we're making an appointment?
We can do it next meeting, I think, and we can just read.
Okay.
We'll see what's involved.
Okay.
It's just making an adjustment next meeting, we can do that if it's something far...
Okay, great. Okay, so there's been a motion, a second. Further discussion? On paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And Central Vermont Internet Board. And I know we have a couple people here interested in that, so one possibility is, well, I guess I'd say let's hear from, from you all if you would introduce yourselves and tell us about your interest in this.
One regular seat, one alternate seat.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Dan Jones, Northfield Street. Most of you know me so, but you know me in a different context, which is through the Sustainable Montpelier effort. It turns out I have, and a few lifetimes ago, an experience of being a telecommunications person as well, and worked with the city of Boston doing the cable franchise, and then worked for numerous cable companies and cities during the 80s on new technology, et cetera, and along with trying to do a startup with interconnecting cable companies. I learned in that process a whole lot about the sort of legalities of franchise law, the development of technology. I don't profess to be a engineer or a expert in this in all ways, but I, as you know, I care deeply about sort of the sustainable future for the town. I think a communications system would, especially for Central Vermont with some independence, would be crucial to that, so that's why I'm putting my name forward on this. One other thing, too, I think you might want to have a check with the city attorney whether our membership in EC Fiber should be removed, because we seem to have, we can't be a Part II unions, I believe, and EC Fiber has pretty much said they're not coming here anytime in the near future, so I would recommend that we get some clarity on that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have already looked into that issue, and we can be members, and I would ask that you consider maintaining the membership and serving as the bridge between EC Fiber and its successors.
Would you like to introduce yourself?
Stephen Whitaker. And I've been at this for 24 years, telecommunications planning here. Prior to that, I was climbing towers and building cable systems in other parts of Communications Union District is a new law, a couple years old. As soon as that law passed, I had been involved in the White River Valley many years ago as a regional planning commissioner, and then as Central, as EC Fiber got successful, I attended a lot of those meetings with my friend Charlie Larkin. He has withdrawn his nomination for this spot due to health reasons. He's in his 80s now. But he was the telecom engineer with the Department of Public Service for many years. So some of what I would ask you to consider is that Montpelier, as the seat of state government, and as a owner of a municipal heating system with fiber, unused fiber attached, with a point of presence, it's called a fiber access point, FAP, at the Velco substation out on River Street, we are uniquely positioned to set statewide leadership. We can near-term bridge to CV fiber using that Velco interconnect. We can light up downtown buildings along the heat system. We will probably be lower priority in the 12-town district, or 12 and growing, due to the fact that most, all addresses in town are served by Comcast right now. But the addresses that can be commercial buildings, especially that can be interconnected with symmetric high-speed fiber, could really set, set us into a new direction. The interplay, which I'm also involved with frequently with Paco and his work with telecommunications planning for public safety. You've seen a lot in the news lately about the wireless access points, coverage code being disconnected. We could immediately prioritize the known dead zones and build fiber to those locations because we would not be redundantly planning where tower coverage will be. So I've just been doing this a long time. I made the pitch to the Regional Planning Commission, hoping they could get this started two years ago, but their executive committee didn't run with it. They're going to wait till they rewrite the plan. So I'm glad that Montpelier, I saw fit to join, to create one, hitting the ground running with integrated planning along public safety, civic engagement. I won't go into the details about what we've... I've talked with the mayor and the city manager briefly about the use of that heat fiber. I'm open to questions. Should you see fit to appoint me, I would not only be keeping you well informed, I'd be trying to get you more involved, because there's a lot of work to do. We're a decade behind.
Thank you. Any other questions? So this is sort of an unusual appointment, particularly because with this other board, it is also possible that a councilperson could be the representative on there as well. I mean, are there any other councilpeople who, who might want to be considered? If not, that's fine.
Yeah, I have the interest, if not the expertise, but when I looked, it's just one regular and one alternate. You know, usually, I guess if there were like two, I don't know. I have some interest, but...
Okay, at this late date. No, no, fair enough, that, that makes sense. Well, I, especially because we have an alternate position and a regular position, it probably, it makes sense to me that we should probably go into an executive session and, and then come back out? Does that sound... Okay.
Before we do any non-executive section question, which is, I don't...
I'm speaking to Mike.
You gotta get close.
Thank you, yeah. How many, how many members are on this, on this committee, and how many do we have compared to the other towns in the group?
My understanding is that it's one representative per town, in this municipality.
Most of them, not all of them voted in March, and I think it's 12.
It took, it takes, under, under law, it takes two towns to originally form a district. Any number of towns can move to join it on that same town meeting. Additional towns can join in a bilateral vote, by vote of the select board, and then a vote of acceptance from the district of the vote of joining.
Also, because of the nature, because of the nature of the business, the town is not funding this, other than appointing a representative, so it has to create a business and funding plan as its sort of first order of business. So where there are areas that might be opportunities, there also has to be the area of figuring out who is going to actually pay for this and how, you know, how the funding will take place. Now, the towns, almost universally within the Central Vermont district, voted to say, yes, we want to be part of it in the town meeting this year. Now, the question is, how does it put together and how does it get funded in such a way that it could actually do something as opposed to have good ideas? So that, so it becomes almost more of a business proposition to begin with, rather than an operational problem.
And just for the new members, info, under the statute that allows these to be created, it actually prohibits tax dollars from being put in. That was, it was, created the opportunity for communities to join for these things, but did not for state or local tax dollars to prop them up, so they can't, we can't put the money in, even if we chose to.
All right, so executive session is probably the thing, I think. So hopefully it won't take four hours.
At least we know how to recess now.
Would it, would it help to have a one-minute synopsis of what our, the sister district does, and customers, and revenue, and finance, just so you know what we're getting into? Or does it matter? Doesn't matter at this point?
I, I don't, well, what's your... I have a good understanding of it. I'm feeling pretty good as well. But thank you. All right, so we have a motion.
So...
We've got a site...
Is it Title 313?
It's the one, same one, appointment of public official officer, 313.
I think it's 313, so according...
Correct. You don't need to have a finding for that one, that's when you're allowed to go.
Right. Then we can go into executive session.
So was that a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll be right back. Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great. So I guess we'll start with the motion.
I would like to make a motion that we make Dan Jones the appointed regular representative on Central Vermont Internet, and that we make Stephen Whitaker the alternate.
Great.
I'll second.
And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you. So especially since this is a new thing, oh, we didn't, we didn't specify the length of time. I would move that we make the terms for the Central Vermont, what do we call it? Internet? Two things at once here.
Central Vermont.
Central Vermont Internet Board appointees for Montpelier to be a one-year term.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. So especially since this is a new venture for us, I mean, we're excited about it and looking forward to, to hearing back from you, you know, how it's going, and, you know, hoping that it's a really positive collaborative relationship with them, so...
How, how long would you like a report back?
Especially given that it's new, I would think on the scale of like every three months or so, I mean, hopefully, does that sound...
Or is there a significant, you know, as a community, is there a significant...
And it doesn't need to be like, you know, coming to the council, but even if it's something that we can put in, in the council, city manager, mayor's report or whatever, that would be useful.
Sure.
Yeah. We, we receive a written report from the city manager every week on Friday, and this would be a wonderful place to have a written update. Doesn't need to be in this setting, so.
Okay.
Great.
Unless there's action needed.
Great. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And Green Up Day.
Thank you. Thank you. Actually, I'll just hand those out. Just take it one. Good evening. My name is Nate Hausman. I'm a Montpelier Life board member, and I also help coordinate Montpelier Life's Green Up Day efforts. And I know, since we have some new city councilors, I thought I'd sort of apprise those who don't know a little bit about Green Up Day, and also I'll tell you about one new element that we're adding this year that I think would be helpful. So in case you're not familiar with it, Green Up Day is an annual statewide effort. It brings over 22,000 volunteers from around the state to pick up litter from the roadways and public areas around the state. It's been happening since the 1970s. In Montpelier, we have a robust effort. It's coordinated through Montpelier Live, and really the way it works is that, that we provide bags for volunteers to use to collect litter at the Montpelier Farmer's Market, so they can come down, they can pick up bags, they can pick up gloves, and they can be assigned or claim a stretch of roadway or a public project. There's some other projects that happen around town. It happens to coincide, this year it's, it's May 5th, so it happens to coincide with, well, it actually annually coincides with Montpelier's May Fest. So that's the event where Three Penny does a Montpelier, there's a pie breakfast, it's the first outdoor farmer's market, there's a lot of events in hubbub around town. So, so as part of that, we do, we do Green Up Day, and, and as I mentioned, people can come down to the farmer's market, they can pick up supplies, and they can get assigned an area to green up. They can also pick up some, a coupon sheet that has goodies from local businesses that they can redeem from, from around town as well. Bags can be left curbside across town. The good folks at, at the Department of Public Works pick those up on the Monday typically, or, or the following week after Green Up Day. In addition to, to coming down to pick up bags at the farmer's market, or if you're not able to, you can pick up bags at the city clerk's office in advance of Green Up Day. And, and that's really, well, and also I should say there's some corporate groups, because we have a, a large corporate community, there's some corporate groups that green up the Friday before Green Up Day. But part of the coordination, one of the challenges with coordinating the event is that it's, sometimes people are greening up and we're not aware of it. So to help us sort of coordinate efforts and not be duplicative, and also track how many volunteers and how many bags, we're rolling out a new app or an online mapping tool. And you can see a URL in the sheet I just handed you, but the idea is, it's only going to be effective if we roll it out on a, on a widespread basis. And so the idea is that I just wanted to sort of inform you and apprise you of that so you can help spread the word. We'll also make these sheets available at the city clerk's office when folks come, and we'll have them down at the farmer's market. But, but I just wanted to briefly leave it there and see if you have any questions about the day.
Does this mean that there will no longer be giant maps and everybody write their name on the road and they're picking? I understand the practicality of the app, but that has a space in my heart for the tradition I remember as a little kid, you know, writing my name on a street in my hometown. So I'm just a little sad of this. But I understand why we would need to...
I appreciate the nostalgia. No, it, it just is hard because people are collecting, as I said, in advance and greening up sometimes that doesn't happen at the day of, and so this will allow us in real time to coordinate and track those volunteers. So I think it'll be more effective if, we'll also probably have a paper version, and I know I'm keeping track, non-electronically as well, for the corporate groups anyhow.
That looks good. So does that mean that because my ultimate frisbee team has a tournament on that day, that we could go before or after, and this app would help us like pick a place to go?
Correct, yeah. And I should say...
Just as an example.
That's a great, that's a great example, no. And I know you did that, your team did that last year, and I really appreciated that. And, and just as an example, too, if there are particular projects, so Green Up Day, while we embrace picking up litter, there are other projects happening around town. I know there's an installation going into the north branch, I know there's going to be some beds being planted around... be some beds being planted around City Hall, so there's some other efforts. And if you have particular efforts, I, I put an email out to the, the tree board folks. If there are other efforts that you'd like help with that you think would be in the public interest, I'd be certainly willing to, to take those as well.
Great. Thank you so much. Excellent. Green Up Day is one of my favorite days in Vermont.
Thank you, Nate. For the new council members, Nate is also Mr. Skating Rink.
Yeah, so grateful for that, too. He works hard.
It's now gone.
He says what a big guy.
Okay, we're up to the police department presentation.
You gonna need a second?
He used to hook up the pump here, so.
Sure, yeah, but maybe we can take a little five-minute break here while Tony sets up?
Do we have a silence?
Okay.
Okay, so we're.
All right, this is the.
License ordinance?
This is the John is an Idiot.
No.
Oh, it is. This is, um, this is, I'm gonna, I'm gonna blame my, being my first term at the time, and I didn't know what was going on. I was, I was young and naive. We had, we went through, at my own encouragement, we went through a couple rounds of conversations about the crazy licenses. And when, when Rosie brought up the screwy ordinances, it was like the license, I was like, oh, no, no, those are all out of date. Well, I went back through the minutes, turns out they weren't out of date. We went through and made two rounds of it at the time, and we, we took sort of the first wave out, and then there was, we came back to it. And there were some different requests that came from the council that I was supposed to get back to the council with something more formal about, and they got put off and put off and put off for months, and it went into oblivion. And somewhere along the line, I decided that they must have magically happened because I've been acting as though they have. I've been, you know, bragging about how I was, you know, responsible for getting rid of the dry cleaner's ordinance, what a ridiculous thing that was. And we, in fact, still technically require a license for anyone who would want to come in out of town to have their dry cleaning done in Montpelier. That was in fact the very license that inspired me to say, let's go through these. So anyways, what I have here is a list of the things that we were supposed to come back to minus the dry cleaning ordinance. I'd love to get rid of that, too, but these are the, there was some concern about environmental contamination or something, so that got sort of left hanging. But if, if I had come back, and this was largely Tom Galonka who had wanted some other changes, this is what would have come next. It would have included an addition, you see in the thing I printed out there, of Section 912, which is sort of an odd place to put it, but it's where we want to put it, requiring that a license fee schedule just gets approved annually by the city council, taking it out of the ordinances entirely, which I actually think is probably a pretty good idea. And then all the repealings that you see underneath are those sections of those license ordinances that set the rate. So that way, all the sort of hardwired license rates are out, there's a license fee schedule understanding up there that I would just bring to sort of re-approve, re-review. And then a couple of the licenses that had gotten added in at my request were then supposed to be pulled out again at my request, just because the circumstances around them had changed and they seemed needlessly punitive. So, all that stuff just literally never happened. So I just wanted to run this by you all, see if it's still something that the council, even though it's a completely different council, would like to do, and I hope you'd also be interested in getting rid of the dry cleaner license, and I could draw it all up as a proposed ordinance change and just start throwing it at you all next time, because it's, it's pretty goofy and it's pretty embarrassing that I dropped the ball and then told myself I hadn't.
So, questions, thoughts, concerns about this?
So, the dry cleaner license is what, that someone, someone who doesn't live in Montpelier and brings their clothes into Montpelier to?
Well, the dry cleaner's supposed to have a license, and then you're supposed to come and get a license from my office if you're from outside of town and you want to have your dry cleaning done in town.
I didn't even see that one.
Yeah, yeah. It's right up, it's right up there with the, you know, the, the dairy ordinance that we did get rid of. That one did manage to make the cut there. But, yeah, yeah, so it's, I mean, you know, and there was also one that was discussed around back and forth was the blacksmith one. And I was actually the one who encouraged that to stay in, because I was like, you know, that could be kind of a boutiquey kind of thing somebody might want to do, and that could be a massive crazy fire hazard if somebody wanted to, and we might want to license it. You know? So that was, that was the other odd one, but, you know, whatever you all, you all make the rules, I just, you know, type things.
He just confuses us.
I'm very much in favor of doing this. I would encourage you when you bring it back.
So, so I assume that we have to go through the normal process, we've got to have two hearings.
Yes, I was just looking for guidance on.
So when we do that, I would simultaneously like to adopt the fee schedule so that we're not operating for a while without fees.
Right, so I guess, I guess if we're going to do it in the order of operations, I guess we would probably have to do that immediately after a second reading was passed. Well, we could do it in the next meeting because it wouldn't go into effect for another 15 days after second reading was passed. So that would theoretically put it to the next meeting, so the next meeting you could just approve it. That would probably be the order of operations.
Second hearing, so we'll propose the changes and then we'll propose the schedule. Make sure that we sync up.
Okay, well, the fee schedule wouldn't be part of an ordinance change, though.
Rosie's suggesting is that we approve that at the same time we do the ordinance change, so we have to do fees in place over the same.
Okay, I'm just saying they wouldn't, the change wouldn't affect for two weeks.
Right. So, but that's.
Is there any more on that, Rosie?
Nope.
That would, that's good.
Dry cleaner, up, down?
Well, okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna put in my, my two cents here, which is that, I think it does not make sense to require a license from somebody out of town to get their dry cleaning done in town. That does not make sense to me. But I do, I would like to see dry cleaners continue, like, the, that operation continue to be licensed, just because it does, you know, it has the potential to use some pretty gnarly chemicals that, should there, you know, kind of like the issue with the blacksmith, right? Like, if, if something were to happen, like, we want that paper trail and we want to make sure that they're doing their due diligence. And I would actually also make the same case for gas stations.
Oh, gas stations is the other one.
So, I would like, those are the two that I, I would, I mean, I might be in the minority, I could get outvoted, that's fine, but those are, those are the two that I would want to retain of all of those that are listed. John and then John.
Well, I mean, you're the chemist. Versus listing those specific, what if you made the general heading that things that dealt with certain chemicals or potential, do, do you have to name the producer, such as the cleaner, the gas station, or is it the, the businesses that deal with certain products that are potentially endangered?
I think naming chemicals that we want to prohibit is, would be.
Or the characteristic, no, okay.
I don't think that's, I don't think there's any way to really effectively do that or enforce it, or, I think, the only thing I would mention as far as the potential pushback is, part of the reason when I got here, I just sort of realized these things were here is that the gas station license, the dry cleaner license, don't, doesn't look like they had been enforced in, in decades. So I will be going to them for the first time in, you know, 50 years and saying, hey, guess what, you owe us money. So you might get some pushback on that.
My understanding is that the dry cleaner that's in, in town, that's, you know, a fair name, that's not actually a dry cleaner, it's just a drop, a dropping off point, right? So.
Oh, I don't know.
That's my understanding of that.
Yes, it's a, it's a drop off.
Because it's a drop off, I would guess that they, well, I don't know, I mean, is that covered by dry cleaners? I would guess not, but, yeah.
It sounds like this is a discussion we should have in the discussion of whether we feel that ordinance.
I'll build something for you all to bounce off of and then you.
Thank you. You need to give John the go-ahead to do this, and we'll have two hearings. Okay. You didn't get anything else from us, right?
Nah.
Okay. How are you doing?
We're good.
Okay, great. So, back to police department presentation. Great, and I'm gonna move.
So first off, this is our plug, we run Apple products in the cruisers, so. Sorry, you need that? No, that's good. Flashing. Yeah, I'll tell you, okay.
We're good. Oh, well, yeah, actually, no, so thank you.
Sure.
So this is, um, last meeting, we just did the real quick one on that, and this is the first of our department presentations, to try to get everyone acquainted with functions of the department. As you know, we all took, except for Jack, took a tour of the police department last Wednesday. You may have forgotten that, there were a lot that's happened after that tour, but we did spend an hour with the police chief. And this is really the follow-up walkthrough and a chance to have an open conversation about department issues. We'll be doing these systematically. Next meeting will be DPW, which is why we're scheduling the tour for next week. So, that. Without a turnover, Chief.
Well, thank you all for the opportunity. It's, this is gonna be, we're gonna start off with like a 10,000-foot view, but we can, if there's any questions at any time, by all means, you know, we'll, I'll try to address them the best I can. And, and the main point is to take away from tonight's presentation is, first of all, Montpelier is still an incredibly safe and very healthy community. So even though things that I focus on sometimes are the darker side of, of social challenges, you know, from, from crime to even potential terrorism to opiate addiction, all those things, but overall, Montpelier is doing very, very well. So, I'll start off with the, just our organizational chart. Thanks, Juan, Bill. You have the, you have the?
I don't have it.
Oh, you, oh, I'm sorry.
I just have.
Okay. I can see that, but our authorized strength right now is 16 police officers. We currently have a vacancy that we have been, we've identified the candidate, but that vacancy was, came about last June when an officer left our agency for another agency up in the northern part of the state. And it just, so one of the challenges there highlights how long it takes to identify a police officer candidate, and then this, this person, and she is actually currently has been a dispatcher with us, she is a level-two part-time police officer with another community, but she is the one that we've identified as the next full-time Montpelier police officer. So she'll, she finishes her testing later this month, and she is, all goes well, she will be starting the full-time basic academy at, in Pittsburgh in August of this year. The basic academy is 16 weeks, and then there's a couple weeks of post-basic training, so it just gives you a sense of how long the process takes. Because she's already part-time certified, we're able, we'll be able to hopefully start front-loading some of her field training. But just because for any candidate, when they go to the police academy, they also still will, will have several weeks of structured field training with a certified field training officer, and we've got a few in the department, just to make sure that from a, you know, from legal process to the Montpelier way, if you will, that, that any, any new officer is installed with all those, those skills, so we know they're going to be effective once they are on their own. So it's a very lengthy process. This is the, there's been a change, I didn't, I wasn't able to update on this slide, this is our structure for dispatching, and as you see on the end, dispatcher Danielle Fratini, she is the, the candidate that we've identified that will be our next police officer. And we've already hired and are training Marion Larkin, who's not on the, on here, as, and she is our newest full-time dispatcher. In addition to these, to the structure here, we have seven full-time dispatchers, one of whom is a dispatch supervisor, that's Fred Cummings. We're also very fortunate that we have three part-time, as needed, dispatchers. Each one of those was a former full-time dispatcher with our department, so that really helps us out when, you know, cover time, vacation, or when we get down staff. And parking division, we have one full-time CS, Community Service Officer, that's what, it'll be different when Tom McCarroll talks about CSO from when I talk about CSO. And then we have, and the other, and Sheila works half-time, and, and Charlie is retired from the Department of Public Works as a, as a supervisor, and he is, he, so he has very limited hours, but what he does is he is, does a lot of the mechanical, the behind-the-scenes maintenance downstairs in the basement of our, from the meters to helping work the kiosks, and also does the collections. So it's a very small but very potent little team.
Real quick again, what does CSO stand for for you?
Community Service Officer.
Thank you.
And a lot of that, because they are represent, they do represent the department on the street, especially during high tourist times, but they can handle a variety of general questions. And also when we have big events, July 3rd, Corporate Cup, where we also, they will assist at intersections and with traffic, they can't direct traffic the same legal way that a police officer can, but we do, they, they definitely are part of our, our public safety team and augment us very nicely during those big events. This is just a snapshot of the operations side of expenditures. What's not included here is the equipment side and also, you know, the, the station and the, you know, the big picture things. So, most of this is in salaries. And, and also, when you look at the communications budget, what's not included there is, for example, some of the revenue offset between, like, for F, for this, for FY19, our primary partner, which is still a contractual client relationship, is Capital West, and their, their portion for FY19 is about $340,000 that they pay to the city of Montpelier for dispatching services, then there's roughly, just shy of $10,000 from the Capitol Police, those are the, that's the department that actually is, works inside the State House. So in all total, we have about $350,000 in revenue for that year. And we'll talk a little bit more, I'm sure there's any questions about dispatching as, I'm sorry.
I just want to clarify that, you know, $300,000 or so, is that, that reduces this line item?
Yes.
Or that's on top of?
No, no, that reduces it. So our primary, our primary function, it's, we have to be a jack of all trades in some regard and a master as many as possible. Primary function is just general policing duties, that is, be available for calls, we have patrol functions, and it's, you know, and one of the, one of the benefits of being in law enforcement is that you never know what you're gonna do from day to day, and there's a diversity of, of needs, you know, for any community, and that's, so it really requires a work of, a police department that is well-trained and, and really engaged in the community, and that's something that we really pride ourselves on. To be effective, what we, in, in our mission, we have, we rely heavily on partnerships and collaboration. In particular, we work very closely with the Vermont Drug Task Force, that is overseen by the Vermont State Police, many of those cases, although the larger ones do end up being prosecuted by the United States Attorney's Office in Burlington. We also work very, very closely with alcohol, tobacco, and firearms, that's our primary, our most close relationship as far as all the federal agencies, but we're also well with FBI and DEA in particular, as well as US Attorney's Office. Project Safe Catch is something that started in Montpelier back in 2016, and it came out of a conversation before the city council in the fall of 2015, with just what's, you know, where, where was Montpelier at with the opiate crisis? And this was a program that became basically a police-assisted addiction recovery initiative. We, we looked, first of all, matter of fact, it was a clip that, that Bill had sent me from, I think it was 60 Minutes or something, about what Chief Leonard Campanella was doing in Gloucester, Massachusetts. And it was kind of, it was definitely groundbreaking at the time, where instead of just arresting and prosecuting addicts, was really how to facilitate getting them to treatment. And so from that, many, many communities, it's now fairly common, but merely, many communities are looking at, hey, that makes a lot more sense. We were one of those communities at the time, we're still less than 100 communities that were doing it across the country. We worked closely with Deputy Chief Dave Grover up in Scarborough, Maine, and their, their. their model was, is what we try to replicate. The difference that we had on the ground here in Washington County with our hub and spoke is that we did not have a waiting list. I didn't even know that until that council meeting in 2015. So working with Deborah Hopkins from Central Montana Services, she was like, hey, that's not the situation here. But yet, we always saw in the media, mostly originating out of Burlington, back when TJ Donovan was the state's attorney and, and Eric Miller was the US Attorney there, was, we kept hearing about this six-month waitlist that, and that was the, that, that was the challenge that Ginn County and the Burlington area in particular had. So when there were all these press conferences, we just, that was just being drummed into our heads. So when I also, working with the undercover community, law enforcement, I said, what are the addicts saying? I mean, you know, what's, what's, you know, do you have, you know, there are opportunities where you're talking to these people, you know, why aren't they getting help or treatment? And a lot of, a lot of it was, they were saying, you know, they don't, they weren't even, you know, besides their own addiction, you know, the way addiction works, but also they just didn't think there was really help readily available. So what, so with Project Safe Catch, which is now county-wide, every police agency has signed on to this, is that we would help facilitate, if somebody initiates at 2:00 in the morning even, I need help, they can come to the Montpelier Police Department, they can go to, you know, they can fly down a trooper, they go to North Berry City Police Department, and we will get them to where they're gonna be supported. Now, 2:00 in the morning, the hubs, you know, they're not gonna have immediate treatment. So what we've done is we were able to leverage and partner with Washington County Mental Health and the Lighthouse, that's our public and need brief bed, which happens to be basically co-located with, with, you know, the, the hub up in Berlin. And they've modified their mission so they could take somebody that's, you know, does not be opiate, but that was the focus, they can be, you know, at least they're there with somebody else that can, you know, keep them supported until the hub, they're able to go in and, and start, you know, it's not gonna be full-blown residential treatment, but they can start that support and start that, that hopefully recovery. The other, another important partner with Project Safe Catch is the Emergency Department, Central Montana Medical Center. In particular, Mark Detman and Dr. Javah Mishkari, they've worked very closely right from the beginning, so in case any patients need more critical care. Also, as we, the other part of the opiate challenge is with the over-prescription. And, you know, Central Montana Medical Center was one of the first emergency departments to restrict the amount of prescription narcotics that would be coming, you know, be, coming out of the emergency department for, for, for an issue. And also, what's, what's vital to any, any, you know, strategy like this, is we have to have the prevention and the educational side. So working closely with Ann Gilbert from the Central Montana New Directions Coalition was also with us right from the start when we launched this. So we're pretty proud of the work. It's, the numbers have been unfortunately underwhelming, but the impact so far is, has been substantial, and the impact, I mean, from a positive standpoint. We don't, the, without any, I don't have the statistical enough cases to show what the true impact was to Montpelier, but we did know that in 2017, we did not have any fatal overdoses that we know of in Montpelier. That includes, when I say that, it's also the Montpelier Fire Department. Burglary was an unprecedented reduction of 50% burglary drop, and we had an overall crime decrease last year of, of 13, roughly 13%. And what I, and one, the only operational thing that we have done differently is Project Safe Catch. So anyway, it's just, and also, symbolically, it's important to show law enforcement is absolutely committed to the health crisis that, that addiction is. And so anyway, so that's Project Safe Catch in a nutshell. Next, I mentioned briefly in the walkthrough, matter of fact, Councilor Bate asked me about the President's Task Force Report on 21st Century Policing. This is, it came out in 2015, and it was really when, after Ferguson, was really, was obviously flashpoint for where police community relations really started spiraling downward. And this Task Force Report highlights essentially six core pillars of policing. And, and from our perspective, those are timeless, and those are essentially our guiding principles in the, and for the most part, even before this report came out, you know, you, you, we were doing most of these things. The, and, and those, of those pillars, the last one, which is officer wellness, is something that we really took to heart more recently. And that includes, we have a police psychologist assigned to the police department that works with our, with our dispatchers and our police officers. We have a dispatcher that's part of a peer support team, and we have a police officer that are part of a peer support team. And they're, they're able to assist any other colleague at other agencies, and that's all part of the EAP program called EAP First. So we're also definitely involved there. Physically, we, besides our training for officer wellness, that also includes, we carry a lock zone and, which is not, which is primarily there in case we get exposed, but also we're there for the community on that, and, and other tactical casualty care type training that all of our officers receive, as well as appropriate defensive ballistic protection and keeping our officers safe. And so that's, that's really the big focus, whereas, you know, the crime prevention, community policing, public trust and accountability, those are things that I think the Montpelier Police Department historically have always valued. So that's why I say that the officer wellness piece is kind of the, the crystallized new, new part of, of how we deal with our department. Dispatching, Capital West, in Montpelier, we, we deal with 18 communities that we provide fire and EMS dispatching. And it's really gone from a smaller contract to really building a partnership, and that includes regular procedures, protocol, and, and there's, there'll be a lot to discuss, you know, later on. I don't, I'm not gonna do a presentation regarding the CBPSA, but those are all things that we've been all working together. What are, what's the right next step to take for dispatching? Parking, for those that don't know, we roughly have 100, 425 parking meters scattered about this, the city. And we also manage a variety of, of major events, including even, even today, you know, our department participated with the security and preparations of, of the Governor's Bill signing. So performance measures, how we're doing. Right now, we start off, a couple of years ago, on our strategic planning process, and unfortunately, I will tell you, that it has absolutely stalled. Part of that is what is the right information? What are the right benchmarks to determine, are we, you know, how is the community better for what we, what we are doing and how we are doing it? So, so we're, so our feedback, it comes from, from a variety of sources, but that's something that we have not lost sight of, but it's, it's an area that we, we need to work on. Certainly, again, making sure that we're, we're not just putting in, it's, it's easy to say how many car stops we make, but again, what's the relationship to those car stops and traffic safety? So.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
What's RMS?
Records Management System.
Oh, right, okay, yep. Thank you.
That's, and we use what's called ValCor. There's two pro, there's two systems in the state, that's, one is Philman, the other is ValCor. And it's not, it can't do, it's very limited as far as, it's not a computer dispatch system, and some of the report features, it's getting a little better, so I can run some basic statistical reports, but, but from a true robust comp stat model, where, where officers can have a kind of a real-time snapshot of where we need to focus our attention and what partners we need to bring to, to address a particular problem in a timely manner, it, it doesn't, we're just not there. There's just more some, some of the, just giving a sense of, of how, you know, busy we are. And we are struggling, especially with the nature of protests in the last, really the last two, couple of years, special events. We just don't, quite frankly, we're really beyond the limit of, of having enough officers to do what we're doing, but the, to meet the expectations of the community. And, and also, we have to think about, back to officer wellness, we have to think about those, those police officers. Captain and I routinely come in on weekends to assist when there's protests, major events. The city does a lot of wonderful events, but again, in today's, you know, just, just the nature, the threat nature, the potential, it's not what it was five, five years ago, and even certainly, you know, 20 years ago. So there's things that we're thinking about that kind of keep us up at night. So the public, so everything feels the same in how, whether it's a farmer's market, July 3rd, Corporate Cup, whatever the event may be, but a lot of these unplanned ones are really starting to burn, burn out folks because, you know, people, it's hard to plan on things when there's another event that's around the corner.
Do you, do you have the ability to call on, like, sheriff deputies to assist with some of these big events?
Yes. It's come a long way, but there's still certain things that are absolutely Montpelier responsibility. But a lot of the protests are really centered on state issues and not, they're, have nothing to do, quite frankly, with the city, whether it's the pipeline protests, or even today, I was in a, I was in the command post, in the Unified Command with state police and that, and Capitol Police. So we're kind of all in it together, so that's come a long way. We have an MOU when there's a crisis that any of the departments in Washington County will support one another, includes the state police. But one of the challenges that we have in the summertime is that the sheriff, Sam Hill, is a little bit limited as far as when he has resources available to us as well. So, and then, so, but it, so in short answer, yes, we do get help where we can, but it's not the kind of situation that we can routinely depend on. And also, you know, we gotta be careful of, you know, we have a standard, not that other departments don't have a certain, same standards, but we don't use part-time police officers here in Montpelier, just because of, you never know what, what they're gonna be, you know, what's gonna be, they're gonna have to deal with, whether it's a mental health call right in the middle of, of a major event, things like that. So we're, we're very careful in how we do that. And, but there is a, maybe just a shortage of statewide of law enforcement.
Can I ask, these statistics, are these annual in the past?
Yeah, I'm sorry, these, all these numbers here, this, this represent 2017. Our social media, we use Facebook, and, so take it for what it is, but it's, right now, it's the, it's, it has been quite successful for us. We've not started, some departments will use Twitter feeds and for more timely, you know, communication exchanges with the community. But again, when you do that and you create that expectation, it better be there all the time, and that is absolutely, we just don't have the capacity, capability to do that.
This might be more of a question for Bill, but is that an area where we could potentially, does the police department have to be the ones actually doing the posting? Could you manage this?
No. We were routinely, especially when we've had situations at, you know, at the high school, I know it just mean that this January, but other very such serious situations that we've had at, you know, in our schools, as soon as I can, I'm communicating with Bill and, because I'm not in a position where we have a fully established incident command, where we would utilize, you know, like Sue has been our, was our public information officer at a Unified Command, for example, at the March For Our Lives command post. But when things are really happening in the moment, I absolutely rely on, on the city manager's office to really get that word out for us.
Yeah, just to expand on that, you know, the city has a Facebook page and the police do, and we always will repost theirs and usually likewise. But they post on their own, it's usually very informative things, like this is something, it, it's usually not in a, during a crisis, it's like, time to get your bikes inspected, or did you know that your police are doing, it's very informative, and I think they actually like that part of it. For emergency communications, right there in the middle of doing what they're doing, we take that right over.
Okay. It's just an area I'm wondering about, you know, efficiencies and one person responsible for all the city's Facebook pages or something, but if it's, if it's working, then.
Yeah. And for emergent, you know, notifications, we use Vermont Alert, and there's certainly preloaded templates, and that's something that, you know, an incident commander, whether it's from the police, fire, we can get those out pretty quickly, which can also be, you know, geo-fence, in other words, if it's something, even a situation that only involves the Meadow area, you know, we can just highlight that area and anybody, depending on what level, somebody who's signed up for, or we can do, it's kind of like the reverse 911 for, for landlines too. So if it's an emergency, we can do that type of notification, and that'll be the part of the Vermont Alert system.
Tony, can you break down, 481 accidents, it seems like a lot. What does that, what does that make?
Parking lot, fender, fender benders.
Fender benders. Is there a particular part of town or roadways that have these fender benders? Because it doesn't say auto accidents, so I wasn't sure if it was.
Yeah. Now, those are, you know, the serious accidents, I must say, are, and I give a lot of credit to better road engineering and the work of public, and the work of Public Works and AOT. I don't know if you recall, long, a long time ago, the intersection of 2302 by Wa, by Formula Ford, used to be one of the very dangerous intersections statewide. We've had horrendous, very bad, bad car accidents there. And, and now, knock on wood, are, are serious accidents, unless it's somebody that's, you know, driving at, you know, insane speed or drunk driving, you know, very few serious accidents, fortunately. So, but we still have to respond to those, and essentially, we're just facilitating exchange of information. We're not investigating those, but it certainly takes a big chunk of our day, and it's usually on day shift, so.
Is it, I, forgive me, I don't actually know this, is it required that somebody call in that situation? And if not, should we do some better public information about, if it's just a fender bender, just exchange your insurance information?
Yeah, yeah, we, we certainly, we've had a lot of internal conversations on, and other at state level even, about how to best manage this, because, you know, slide-offs, for example, for the state police, same, same thing that they're frustrated with, you know, during a snowstorm, which ones you go to, which ones not. A lot of them with fender benders too, sometimes people, you know, get pretty hot-headed. So just once we get there, and, and if we're busy, you know, we'll prioritize calls still. If we can't get to it, we'll just have dispatch explain to them, just have them exchange information. So we do try to manage it there, but we also, again, we're not doing a, a, a full narrative or detailed investigation, and then the rest just becomes, goes in our, our records management system, and then later, the insurance companies request it, so that's one of those public record requests, technically. Now, we're just getting it to the insurance companies when they request it, but.
I'm just wondering if we could, we could reduce that cost by doing a little bit of, you know, reminding the public that they don't, if they don't have to.
Yeah, the duty, you know, to, to report the accident to, to DMV is, is by statute, and that has to do, if there's any injury, you know, we should definitely be called, obviously, if there's ever any injury, potential injury, and if, or if there's, you know, potential DUI, you know, it's a lot of factors. And that's, that's, that's the other challenge that we may have, I mean, what do you do if somebody's intoxicated, whether it's under drugs or alcohol, you know, we don't wanna miss that either. But, but we're always looking at, is, it's certainly a, a major, you know, resource challenge for, for law enforcement as a whole.
Chief?
Sure.
What's, what's overtime looking like these days, especially with, you know, all this on your blade and having the vacancy compared to previous years? Is there a mandatory overtime?
Well, there's a lot of mandatory overtime, and actually, we are still unbelie, I'm surprised, but we are under budget at the moment, not, you know, by.
Not much.
Not much.
You could say we're not over budget.
Right, right, which is, you know, and I don't have a great explanation for that, but I think, you know, because usually, yes, when we're at full strength, we can reduce that when we're, you know, don't have our, our full, full contingent, but then we, then we certainly have to add that. But a lot of it is, you know, training can be part, part of overtime, but also, it's like Public Works too, what's, what are the events, you know, what's the weather? There's, there's a variety of factors that can, but yeah, but right now, this, right now, we're okay. And, and this is actually the, probably, I think since I've been chief the first year that I can remember at this stage of the budget, that the overtime has not been, starting to look a little on the scary side. Also, the other thing that's suffered, but we try to, when we had 17 officers, bike patrol is something that's. is something that's, that's, I think, very near and dear to my heart and to the department. And it's just a, I can't say enough about how valuable the tool is of just bike patrol. And we'd like to do more of that, but it's hard to do that when you're, you know, you've got two, generally two patrol officers on the shift. And, but it's something that I'm hoping as we look at, you know, at least getting back to where we used to be at 17 officers and possibly even at least considering 18, but doing more of those, of that particular. Now, I look at that as a program, it's just a good tool. So, you know, foot patrol is very important as well, but as a former bike officer, I can tell you that the bike is just, you know, you still have all that, you know, you're very approachable on the bicycle, you know, from adult to child. You know, a seven-year-old can say, "Hey, you're on a bicycle, I'm on a bicycle, we have something in common." And also, the bike can get, we can get from point A to point B very quickly with stealth. And also, as we all know, living in Montpelier, we have two main streets, and sometimes it can be like driving in midtown, you know, when those two streets are all jammed up traffic, and the bike is just, can move very quickly and safely through there. So, coffee with a cop is something that one of Mike Philbrook had brought to our department a couple of years, several years ago now. And that's also been just a really great opportunity to have a very low-key, non-adversarial setting, and just talk to anybody about anything. As a matter of fact, many of these, Mike and other officers, they will bring our policy annual, they will bring a copy of the task force report on 21st century policing. And, you know, unless it's an active investigation or something that's operationally sensitive, you know, any one of these officers can answer any question about how our department functions and where our priorities are.
On that, do you have one coming up, or is it a regular scheduled thing?
It's not regularly scheduled, a lot has to do with what, who wants to host us. So the most recent one, we were over down home a couple of weeks ago. We've done them at the Senior Activity Center on Berry Street. And the very first one that we kicked off, several years, many years ago now, was at First Grove. So we keep moving around and, so, but it's a really, just a great opportunity to be with the public where it's not a car stop, it's, you know, we're not focused on something else, like during a parade or something, where we can just really have a conversation. And that is, that's really important, and that's one of the duties to small-town policing. So we've had a lot of successes, I've touched upon many of these. The, what's going to be really important when we think about the budget, and I will be, just as we prepare, you know, for the 2020 budget, trying to, hopefully, there'll be an opportunity to get the department back to full, what I would consider full strength. But what's always been really important, and the city's always been very supportive, is that we always maintained our training goals. Even when we, we had reduced staff, going down to 16 officers many years ago, you know, the city manager was, made clear to me, do not cut your training, because when we're looking at what's left to cut, what's left to cut, and that's something that is absolutely critical in today's policing environment, because of the public expectations, the demands, the diversity of the job require us to have the best training that we can afford, and still, you know, without having everybody in school all the time. And for example, right now, one of our officers is at Roger Williams for two weeks. He's the last of our supervisors, he's a corporal to go through the command training. Earlier this, earlier this winter, we were a very fortunate opportunity, Brandon Alpoza was able to get Dr. Bryant Marks, who used to be part of the White House team under President Obama, who is a subject matter expert on implicit bias training. And I was able to listen to his presentation down in Washington back in 2016. He was able to come up here, and we were so fortunate to get every one of our sergeants, captains, and corporals to go through that training. And that was, you know, it was like $20,000 to get him to come up to Vermont. And every one of the officers had the same reaction that I did. I mean, that he's, he's just one of the best in the business, quite frankly. So that's the kind of training that whenever we see those opportunities, we always try to seek, so to make sure that our officers are on top of how we, you know, because sometimes we might say, "Hey, we're doing it right," but you have to look at, you know, what is the data telling us? You know, we have to, you know, we need guidance on looking at ourselves in the mirror. And especially, it's a little easier for our department because it's, because the statistical, the data is smaller. As a matter of fact, the most recent report that Dr. Sanguino of UVM just released, she really only had a focus on, I think, three departments, just because of, to get, to have the relevance needed, and that was Vermont State Police, and that were Burlington PD, and I think, South Burlington. I don't even think Rutland was on there. And our department was one that did participate with our data, but again, I did, there was nothing just on this report, because the last report was heavily flawed from various standpoints, and so she was, she tried to correct the process, and also the Vermont Chiefs of Police also helped support some subject matter expertise to get that. So those are the things that we always need to be doing, is looking at, you know, it's one thing, do we, do we think we're doing it right, but how do we know we're doing it right? And that's always, you know, has to do with listening, and then looking at what, you know, are, any patterns that, again, that's what implicit bias is, it's a bias that we have, but we don't really think about. Explicit, that's the easy one. But that's, so anyway, that's just an example of the kind of training, the diversity of training that we're always seeking in our department.
Tony, is any of your training that you have appropriate to open beyond the police department?
We've talked about things like Citizen Academy, but once again, I mean, we are so bare-bones with our staffing, so many things that we would love to do for the community and for ourselves too, it's a two-way street, that we just don't have the resources. We are just, right now, we are barely keeping up, you know, with the day-to-day challenges. So, so I think, I think that's the best venue to do that, is to have like a Citizen Academy, where we can talk about these things and bring in outside educators that can help be there for both the community members and for the department. But generally, it's law, you know, most are law enforcement specific. Mental health area response is, it's one other area that we are very proud of our reputation and our collaborative work with Washington County Mental Health in particular. Back in 2011, when Mary Moulton was interim commissioner of Department of Mental Health, she had an idea to launch after, you know, we lost, after Irene, when they had to revamp the whole mental health system. It really wasn't a system even, from my perspective, then, is that how do we, how can we have better outcomes when there's a police involvement with somebody in a mental health crisis? And Team Two was born from that, from Mary's idea. And our department, Vermont State Police, and other stakeholders, and I'm still on the steering committee for the Team Two training model, but it's a joint response training between mental health and law enforcement, working in a, it's an eight-hour program to, and it's a scenario-based training where you really understand who does what. In other words, once the safety issues and some legal issues are dealt with, the whole point of response to somebody in crisis, whatever that crisis may be, is to get them to the appropriate level of care, which, once the safety piece is done, it's not a law enforcement issue. And that's where, so Team Two is based on the model of, the historic model of how Montpelier PD has always worked with Washington County Mental Health. And even as a former negotiator for our department, I've had difficult scenarios, scenes where I was negotiating, and even though it was because of weapons or threat of weapons, it was always important to have, knowing that I had a mental health screener right there with me just in case. And sometimes, if I wasn't getting through this to somebody, I'd introduce, you know, the screener, and we worked so closely with them, that's, and so that's something that we're really proud of, how that works.
So, if I can, sorry to interrupt. I just want to express that I'm feeling the tension between wanting you to be really thorough.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, yeah.
And I know we've got a few more slides to go, so.
Okay.
But I am really interested in the challenges, so.
All right.
I just wanted to make sure I said that out loud. Okay.
The challenge is, the size of it right now, we just need, I think, more police officers, and I want to maintain the training and what we've been doing, we've got good equipment.
Can I ask you a couple of questions about those challenges before you move on? Or these, maybe those are like an expanded version of the challenges?
Some, yeah.
Okay. Well, I just saw on there, there was a facilities need.
Yes.
I mean, I know we have a .25 facilities guy. Is that enough? Is that working out?
It's, so far, we're getting by. As a matter of fact, Steve Twombly today just is finishing up the RFPs for our, to get rid of our chillers for our cooling system, which have been very problematic on the station, to the heat pumps. So, again, it's, it's, once we've identified those projects, you know, who's going to manage those projects?
Okay. And then secondly, I saw also on there, just an increased reliance on IT services, and again, like, is it enough? Are you, is it working?
We could use a little, you know, I know Seth, our, the city's IT person, spends quite a bit of time in our police department.
Yeah, yeah.
And we're getting by.
Okay. It's working. Okay. That's all I need to know? Thank you.
And also to, I need to point out, we also have an officer that does a lot of in-house work on some of our other systems, whether it's the cruiser video, station video, and audio, to even our ID card badges.
Have you had any need that interfaced with the consultant IT? You know, we changed from.
No, that is, you know, Todd can talk more about that, as far as, you know, we have it, you know, I, I'm always having that, you know, keep my fingers crossed, especially when we look at Atlanta and the denial of service ransomware, you know, trying to make sure that we are not vulnerable. So I am hoping that, and, again, I'm pretty old, so I think we put, there's too much reliance on computers in some regard, but I also know it's the only way we operate. So, but it's so far, we've been, it seems to work well. But again, Todd, Todd can explain more if you can.
As far as ransomware, we do have services in place to back up everything. I'm finding that a lot of these instances that we're hearing that are in the mainstream news, a failure to back up or to back up that is not off-site or protected in a manner that allows the community to restore. So our, while we could lose work or data, potentially, we're looking at probably a two-hour worth of recreation. So if we're hit at 10, we could lose, you know, between 8:00 and 10:00 AM worth of data. But as far as critical backup and infrastructure, radios, communications, those are all, have secondary systems to follow along to, so that we wouldn't have, it wouldn't jeopardize emergency services.
Thank you.
The continuity of the operation plan, which we have for the police department, Houston General Two, all of our sites, our, you know, our department has a generator, City Hall has a generator, which also powers the fire department, and our radio, our radio system, which includes National Life, is a generated site. And our secondary, we had evacuated the police department, our secondary location is also one that's generated. Is that, oh, as far as the challenges?
Yes, that's great. Thank you.
Okay. I'll do just look at the news, obviously, this, you know, the, you know, what's happening, dark web, big, big challenge, people are buying narcotics that way, to, most recently, we also saw Backpage, something that we've known about for quite some time, as far as, you know, potential prostitution and other, was finally, was shut down just the other day. The mandatory domestic violence training for this year, all police officers are required to have is based on the cyber crime scene, intimate relationship violence. And so, so technology is something that we are doing the best we can to stay on top of. Major problem, I alluded to earlier, is recruiting retention quality officers. So we are, for the most part, we've had a very stable workforce. And as a matter of fact, last year, until that officer left, we had, we were at, as far as we could tell, a historic high as far as stability went. And it takes a long time to train officers. We're coming up on both state police, having many, many people retiring. Our department, we anticipate, one retirement this year of a senior. And then, captain and myself are looking, you know, we're at that age too, where we're looking at two to two and a half years. So we're also trying to do the best we can with succession planning, making sure that the department is at, hopefully, its full strength. So whoever succeeds me, whether it comes from outside or inside, you know, that we're off on the right foot.
Do we do anything with the, with internships or a school resource officer, getting kids interested in careers in policing? Or is there, I don't know.
Yeah, we do, we have, we have had interns in Norwich in the past, and then various projects with us. The challenges that I talk about here, whether it's the Montpelier Police Department, I've even had, this conversation I've even had back when he was still director with Director Comey, a couple of years ago, the FBI was facing the same challenges that we are, and especially with the, a lot of folks do not want to go into public safety for a variety of reasons.
This is a national conversation.
Oh, I know, yeah.
I see M.A. conferences, it's one of the top topics.
Is there anything here we could be doing?
Well, we look, you know, we're doing, we've made a commitment, we're doing more in Norwich just last week. Norwich, every year does a CSI symposium, and we had another Norwich alum, Mike Philbrook, was there to do a mentoring piece, and we had one of our dispatchers there as well to, so we're participating there. We, you know, and so, and I've reached out to all that, you know, to all of our, you know, our folks, saying, we have Champlain alum, we have some Castleton in Norwich, to just use those opportunities wherever we can to help plant seeds. So, but it's a really, you know, it's just a difficult person profession, and, you know, even other city jobs that are available, you know, the pay is comparable and for other departments, and it's not being a police officer. So with the, with the working, you know, the hours that these folks do, so. I think everything else is pretty, you know, we're aware, any questions, anything else? But some of the key, I have, I've already hit on some of the highlights here, officer safety issues, fentanyl, it's also something that's been on the news quite frequently. As I mentioned earlier, that was one of the main reasons early on in 2015 that we started, we see training and started carrying naloxone. It's just one more layer of danger to, is that the officers are faced with routinely. And still one of the largest, larger, you know, I don't know if it still is the largest, the largest, but fentanyl arrests in Vermont was here in Montpelier a couple of years Todd will probably safe catch, just noteworthy events, the case of the killing of Marcus Austin, Javin Cavallaro's case is still, it's still in the process. And we've done really well, and we, every time we have, even today, when we have these protests, marches, major events, we bring in a lot of partners, Intelligence Center, Homeland Security, state, state Homeland Security, we do deep research and hot washes, what can we do better? For example, the Women's March, which overwhelmed us completely. It wasn't a matter of needing more law enforcement resources, it was a matter of, you know, we didn't have any coordination in a timely manner, because we weren't expecting it with the agency of transportation. So since then, we've, so for March For Our Lives, we had AOT along with our Public Works as well, from the early phases of planning, so, but we, we're doing pretty well there. And then, even though I had a very tragic outcome, the response, as difficult as it was, for the bank robbery at the VSCCU this winter, in January, you know, my highlight is that our school resource officer that happened at the high school there is also one of our negotiators. And so he was able to track the subject, and then coordinate the containment of him, get this, you know, the school is able to implement their procedures that we train on with all of our, all three schools, our safety planning. So, and, you know, but that's something that is obviously, and there'll be more, more coming, we're just waiting for the press conference with the attorney general, as well as the state's attorney, so we can then really, people will see ultimately. as the state's attorney, so we can then really, people will see a lot of, you know, there's a major investigation involved, both of the robbery and then also, obviously, the officer of the shooting, which was the first one in the department's history. That, sorry, I went a little on. Any questions about anything?
Quick one, Chief. It said 425 parking spots were enforced in the city.
We'll have meters anyway.
Meters. Still, I'd heard there was an arrangement with the Capitol Plaza there in the back. Are some of the private spots enforced as well in the city?
Yeah, we have an arrangement with, there's a lease that the city has with Capitol Plaza. And we do provide enforcement for those spaces back there. We also have our, we have our kiosk area, as well as working with Capitol Plaza.
So in that particular case, the city leases part of those four public spaces where people can purchase space. But as part of the lease, if people are parked in their area without a hotel, of course, depends on how big their events are.
Sorry, I just wanted to thank the department for their work today. I was at the bill signing, and it was extremely adversarial. And the fact that there were no incidents and, you know, nothing really bad happened. Hats off to yourselves and everybody else for your work today.
Thank you. There's a lot of moving pieces behind the scenes.
I've got one more.
Yeah.
So in the past, we have kind of asked you to keep tabs on the costs of those protests or the street closures, especially street closures for, you know, various events. And I would just like to keep, you know, a tab on that, so, you know, we don't need to talk about it more tonight, but just know that, I don't know if others are interested, but I'm interested in kind of keeping track of how much are these things costing us, just so that we can weigh, you know, in the future, if we do need to charge fees. And I know we've discussed whether or not that's practical, that kind of thing. But, but so we're, we know what the costs are. And also in our conversations with the state about payment and low taxes, if it's, you know, their events are costing us a significant amount of money, and we can show that, I feel like that's, gives us a little more leverage in those conversations.
Just as a quick, yeah, we are tracking that on the larger events. We're working with the Corporate Cup to something like that, where it's a planned event that does make money, that they can add enough to cover not only our overtime cost, but that's one that requires about 90% of the department to participate, but also the fire department, as well as Public Works on that. So it's, so we're trying to work there. The only, the other way to look at, too, like, take it today, for example, we did have, we did, Montclair did not spend any overtime, but it, and we participated in the planning, but I'm, it takes me out of, out of my office to do Montclair-specific things. So I will say that, to the pilot conversation, what the state police has, you know, has brought in, and how they stepped up their participation, not only for the state-level events, but also for our own major events. You know, I gotta say, it's a, it's a, it's a true relationship that is balanced in that regard. And, and I, I don't feel like that Montclair is now owning too much of a state problem. The protests are frustrating, we're never going to be able to build for a protest, and we'd rather have more than reasons also for the permit process. At least we know, it gives us a heads up, and to, and at least, to a certain extent, who's responsible for what. But on the protests, you know, some of them in the past, it's, you know, we might get a, we have a good working relationship with some of, some of the groups on the environmental side, but it's, it's, it's always kind of moving around. It's things like the farmer's market, if it requires, and other events that require additional resources, that would be a good conversation.
So I have a couple of questions. One of the parts, well, first of all, thank you for all that data, that was great. One of the things that I am gonna, I anticipate we're gonna continue to do as a council, is think about the data that we want to see over time. And so I'm just anticipating, you know, which are the pieces that we pull out from the, you know, the RMS that you all have? And I appreciated that you separated out that there are, that there's data about the city in terms of, like, the number of crimes, the burglaries, or what have you. Some of, some of that is, or the number of car accidents, right? Like, we, we can't necessarily directly affect the number of car accidents that happen if we have safe laws or, you know, driving rules, if there's a problem place or whatever. But that is, that feels more indirect than, you know, ways that we're evaluating, you know, I guess we're not really evaluating the department. But like, you know, and just in thinking about, like, how are we doing as a, as a city? And so, you know, one of the things, just in terms of data that we might want to be front-facing for the public, I mean, we as a group, I guess I would encourage us to think about, like, what are the, the key indicators that tell us whether or not we are a safe community? And that tell us that our police department is doing well? And, you know, the, like, things that come to mind are obviously, like, you know, how, how we're turning out in, like, the Rachel profiling evaluations and, you know, our, like, I love that in your presentation you had, that the things that, it was under performance measures, so I assume those are sort of performance measures that you're inviting, but part of that was feedback from prosecutors or feedback from outside agencies, like, that, that stuff's harder to quantify, but that can be the most meaningful.
We have it in on the council on there, with the prosecutor.
Yeah, right, right. So, in any case, you know, that, those are the, I guess, you know, thinking about how we are evaluating ourselves, it's something I'm very interested in. And it doesn't, it doesn't all necessarily need to be hard data, but I assume that we will, we will want some hard data to, to show the public as to.
Yeah, the hard data is the easy one. It's the, you know, that's why I kind of threw in there from, again, people from the prosecutor's office. Also Circle, which is our partner with domestic violence. And, you know, there's, it's the reason why our department keeps getting asked, hey, can you serve on this, can you do that? It's because of relationships and, you know, the efficacy of our, and value of our work that we do collaboratively. But again, but what are, you know, but I need to know, too, besides the day-to-day things, how, where do I focus our department and our resources in the most effective way I can?
Well, great, part of an ongoing conversation.
Will always be an ongoing.
Yes, yes. Any further questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Detective.
Okay. So we've done the licenses and ordinances. So I know Ashley is not here to necessarily talk about the Social Economic Quality Committee, but, I mean, my, my understanding of this is that, well, I mean, it's even here in the, you know, in the information page for this item. Actually, do, unless, Bill, you want to introduce it?
I mean, I, I just talked with her, tried, ran this by her, I drafted it for her, and she said this is what she wanted to say. So I don't have, you know, I think she's interested in looking at these issues, and I think, I think she, she kind of sees a combined effort. There's, and, you know, my concern, but also an excitement about this. So what are the things that are within the city's, you know, there's certain things that the city government is, you know, we're not going to cure, we're not going to cure addiction, those kinds of things. So what can we do within the resources we have that we can make differences in how we reach out to populations? So I think part of, part of this committee's role might be maybe is we think about ordinances or policies, just to have a look at those and say, what are we missing? Those kinds of things. And also our own, you know, maybe we need each department to figure out what is, you know, happening. But then, she was also interested in then engaging the broader community on some conversations that would be aligned to the government, being the catalyst for what can we at large do to be more, you know, those are, those were our twin goals, we talked it over actually also last Wednesday night, before, before the tour. And then I quickly wrote this up at Senator, she said, yes, this is exactly what I'm talking about.
Yes, Donna.
When Ashley and I talked, we felt, I felt this was a real good follow-up from our resolution, that we wanted, when we wanted to support and acknowledge the high school for Black Lives Matter, and by the same time, knowing that we needed to engage the public with better opportunities for all of us to grow and become more aware. So I saw this committee as being both systemic, dealing with the institution, but also bringing the community together for really community sensitivity, awareness on all sorts of inequality issues, whether it's race or economics. But I would hope that would also come out of this committee. And this read this way, I appreciate what you wrote here, it seems to nail it down.
So, other thoughts?
The only other thing was, I'd really like to see some clear stakeholders, or whether we name a variety of people, like high school students, or people from organizations within town, but that we actually think about the stakeholders and not just open it to 12 members or something.
Thoughts? Yeah, Rosie? So, not responding to that, but separately or in addition to this, I had a conversation with Bill about whether this is part of the work that the committee does, or just alongside, that we would ask city staff to think, and this has, you know, worked for us as well, but to think about the ways in which their different departments interact, and if there are areas for potential inequity in, you know, our application process for something, or the hours that we have a service open, or how we advertise that there's financial aid for something, you know, I, I can't name all the ways, because I don't know, but the city staff are more familiar with their programs. And if we just make some time to, to, to mental space to think about those issues, I would encourage Bill to, to make that a priority for staff. But I wanted to kind of open that up and make sure that everyone else felt that way as well, and then maybe with that direction, that kind of empowers that conversation a little more. That makes sense to me. I think, from my thinking, a good analogy for what this is trying to do is sort of similar to the Energy Committee in that they have, you know, they see their mission as advising this council, but then they also become, you know, a catalyst for public conversation and outreach and, and other efforts besides things that are specific to the city. But, but I love this idea, too, of like, if there's city staff that know, like, this is potentially a problem, like, of course, that would be a great place to have that discussion and then bring it to council for an action if something needs to change or whatnot. And recognizing that people probably don't know right now that there's a problem, because if there was, I'm sure they would have identified it. But to, to set aside some time to say, okay, we're going to think through, are there things? And, you know, actually do that work.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think that's where, you know, I think we, we, in terms of our own departments, I mean, we have co-leadership committees, and we're talking about just some topic, I picture this being a topic, how can our departments reach out to the population? Maybe we're missing any of it, or what can we do differently, and those kinds of things. And I think as far as the public piece, again, the city engaging in a community conversation, I think we need to be careful about being, you know, morality book priests, too, telling everyone how they should see and feel, but creating form for people to have those interactions themselves, and then we see that really be effective. Also check our own activities.
So one possibility is that, it feels like there, there needs to be a little more definition as to, you know, are we looking for 12 members? And if we were looking for 12 members, are we saving seats for any particular organizations? Part of me feels like we're not quite ready to put this out to the public yet. I guess maybe we can throw it back to Ashley to say, come, come with a specific proposal about, or unless, unless people here want to make that proposal.
Feel like it needs a little more time?
Yeah, people have suggestions for, you know, if you have not, you know, as a department, that, of those particular groups that are likely to be, we're passionate to.
Well, I guess at the high school, the Justice Alliance came to mind, and I can't remember the name, that Kathy Johnson.
CQ Strategies?
Yeah.
But Kathy is an individual.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, she belongs to a group, but likewise, talking to those groups and who do they interface with, it's like expanding that thought process. And maybe you have basically an information meeting to sort of sort out what this looks like, and who should be members, before we try to make a decision in such a shallow knowledge base.
Yeah, Justice for All comes to mind as well. But then, you know, I'm also thinking about, if there's somebody from the Bethany Church with the homeless shelter there, that might be good, I mean, just brainstorming. Okay, so maybe we can ask Ashley or to work the city staff, to come up with a solid, like, more concrete proposal, that, something that we could put out to the public to say, you know, we're looking for people to join this. Okay. Can I, so that that work that I was suggesting can happen simultaneously, I guess I might make a motion that we direct the city manager to make inequity, or, or, you know, looking for unintended areas of inequity within city business, a topic of conversation. I, I don't want to be too specific here, because you- Does that seem reasonable?
Yep.
Okay. One second. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, thank you. And, okay, and I guess we'll look for this on another upcoming agenda. All right, moving on to council appointments, or committee appointments. So some of these, if I am not mistaken, like, the first one, it's yellow. There's, I assume we should just go straight through this, right? There's no council rep on the Americans with Disabilities organization, but that's okay, unless somebody wants to.
Correct. We have, we have had council reps, and we have not had council reps.
If anybody wants.
And what do they do? I, I can imagine that some of these committees are committees that have a name but don't necessarily meet all that often, some of them might be particularly active.
So this group's pretty active, they try to meet monthly, I think, and they're working specific, so their main function right now is we're required to create this transition where we're fully compliant with ABA, and they're heavily in the works, I think they're getting a consultant through that. And then they will also discuss initiatives, like if, you know, rec department comes in and, you know, wants to talk about a program, they'll give some advice to how that could work, and they'll sort of vet it out. And they have on occasion, very rarely, if there's been a community problem, somebody's raised a, you know, non-city, that there was a building in the community that they felt they didn't know, sort of, that, that happens a lot less frequently. They meet about, I think Sue's there, so I'm looking to her to nod, but I think you said monthly, right?
It's monthly. And they do things, for example, mountaineers appear before them to talk about some changes they want to make to the stadium to make it more ABA compliant, and the committee looks for ways to pay for that, and ways to help them achieve their goals.
So I think maybe doing, doing a little bit of intro for each of these groups might be, might be useful. So is anybody interested in, or we shall we, or shall we leave it as no council? Okay, moving on.
The Building Code of Appeals, we do have Glenn actually pointed to that, that is a group that hears, our building code does have an appeal process, and if someone wishes to seek some sort of variance or appeal of a ruling made by the building inspector, they can go to this board. They used to meet fairly regular basis, I think, with the change in sprinkler regulations that work has kind of dropped drastically, because almost all of their appeals were sprinkler appeals. At this point, it's Rosie and Glenn. Capital Complex Committee, the city is entitled to one rep, appointed rep, and Paul has been our rep for some time, and it's, I think he's done a solid job representing us in-
Very grateful.
-fighting what is sometimes an uphill battle. But it does, there's no requirement, for a long time, it used to be a member of the Planning Commission, but that changed, and now it's just a community person. I personally see it as going to change that. Capital Projects Committee, that is a committee that meets two or three times intently around budget- budget time, when we're putting together our capital plan, sometimes meets occasionally outside of budget season to go over status of projects and those kind of things, look at policies related, we've traditionally had three council representatives, the last two were John Haller and Justin Turkot, and I think Jean had been on before that, so they're all, they're not here, so we look to vacancies, and Donna has served recently.
Don't we give this a different name? We call it the CIP, Capital Investment.
Capital Improvement Plan.
Yeah.
Okay.
I want to stay on it.
We internally use that.
Please.
Interchangeable.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure that's the one I thought it was.
Same one, yes.
That's all right.
Just to, I want to flag that, so Bill and I have had some conversation about this group, I mean, this is the, this is where decisions are made about which roads get paved over the course of a summer, and, you know, what stormwater projects are we going to tackle, and, you know, any recreation path improvements or whatnot, all those decisions get made there. So, I mean, that's, it seems like there's a lot of, a lot of folks who would be interested in that, like, those decisions, so I'm interested in seeing what that process is like, and if we need to, I know they haven't, or they don't necessarily meet that many times, but, you know, it might be something that we reevaluate what that process is like.
And I think we will talk about this depending on time, when Public Works comes in, there's a lot of Public Works, it'll probably be even longer than the police, but, you know, typically, the process in the past, we, the council had, has established a funding policy for, for capital projects, and we've been following that, and the budget, it's been budgeted accordingly, and so then it's fitting the projects into the funding, and typically, DPW and staff puts together a rough draft, this committee reviews that, and goes back and forth, helps prioritize and put those things in, and I hate to correct the mayor, but the actual approval is made by the city council, but the, the, the committee makes the recommendation, it's usually listed in the budget document. This year, there really was zero discussion about that, in council board budget, it was just a daunting, it's part of the budget, in other years, it has been lengthy conversation here, so.
I'm sure that will not be the last time you correct me.
Clarify, let me clarify.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. So, other people who might be interested in that?
It's a great committee, folks, it really is.
Where the money is.
I think I could potentially be interested, and I'm also curious, since there are three spaces, whether it might make sense, and since it's such a wide-ranging thing, whether it might make sense to have one from each district, does that make sense as a pattern?
So, back when, that is what we did, intentionally.
Yeah.
And then over time, council got away from that, so we're back to the future.
And the mayor was on for a while, so.
And the mayor won, yeah, so that fessed it up too, but also just sometimes it was more than just.
But anybody can come.
It is, but that is true, in some years, we have had more than three on the committee, 10 meetings, now we have to be careful about how the participation goes, you are allowed to attend a public meeting, you just have to be careful about, so, if the committee's discussing, and you're the fourth or fifth council member, you can't really weigh in with your opinion, you can listen to the conversation and become informed, but you can't necessarily say, well, I'd be in favor of that, now we know we have four votes, so you're going to be careful of that, but you, people can attend.
It's a public meeting.
It's a public meeting.
It is a public meeting.
I know, it's just you have to be careful.
And it's posted.
It's very clear that, in, I checked that, actually, you can attend public meetings.
Yeah, no, I'm not disputing that, I'm saying, I think you might be able to say your opinion.
Well, maybe you can.
It's in public.
We've tried to be careful.
Yeah?
There you go.
I mean, if nobody else wants it, I mean, I'm, it is something that I'm very interested in, unless, you know, other people want it.
Take it while you can and make it change tomorrow.
Okay, all right, I'm going to volunteer myself first.
Glenn?
Because I can't get enough committees in my life.
I will say, for Glenn, is that it is really good for a new person to be on, because you really do learn a lot about all the projects going on and things that are happening, it's a good way to get acquainted with what's happening. But we also try to squeeze a fair amount of meetings in at a short period, you know, they're usually almost like three, four weeks, and that's it, you know, maybe one other one the rest of the year or something, so, it's short, heavy lifting, and then. Central Regional Planning Commission, we have a planning commissioner, Kirby, and Mike is our alternate, and that's all set. Regional Planning Commission, TAC, which is Transportation Advisory Committee, Councilmember Bate has been our rep, and Tom has been our alternate.
Okay, so these are two different things.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
There's the actual commission, which we are entitled to having a commissioner on and an alternate, and then there's this, and again, the TAC, they really, they're the ones that deal with funding, transportation funding for the region, and make recommendations.
We negotiate which road gets done with a little bit of pennies we have, regionally. And it's really a good group, they do think regionally about the volume of roads, and how much use and pivotal, it's been a very good group to be associated with.
Central Regional Solid Waste Management, we are also a member, a voting member of the district, Ellen Chee has been our rep, and Donna has been our alternate.
I don't want to keep the alternate.
Okay.
Somebody else can come.
Doesn't have to be a council rep, although it had been, in fact, for years, we had a council member, Ian Huber was our rep for a while, and he couldn't keep it up, so he dropped alternate on the citizen, and then just kept the council alternate, but there is no requirement either.
I mean, it's an interesting group, you do learn a lot.
If nobody's interested, we could also put it out.
Yep.
Before we appoint Ashley.
She did say, right, whatever. Should we put it out, and then if the tails are put?
No.
Interested in this area.
And we've, we've had some really good citizen reps, so Ellen's been really good, and we have more before her a long time, so.
Ellen seems to really like doing that, too.
So, advertised?
Sure.
The Community Services Steering Committee, I'm not sure we need to continue that anymore. This was a committee that was created, oh, I just skipped the citizen advisory board for the Community Justice Center, so we are, Community Justice, there's a cap, Community Advisory Board, that they rely on heavily, Ashley has been very involved, I would suspect she wants to stay on, she's been a pretty key member on that, so. Community Services, we were looking at combining or merging some functions of departments with the Community Services, but we had a big steering committee with facilitator, and we had a council rep, Justin Turkot was the rep, I don't know that it's active anymore. I don't think so, I think that's one we can probably scrap for now.
Yes, Donna? Do you think you'll recreate it when you, if the feasibility study happens?
Oh, the feasibility study for a facility?
Yeah, and services.
I think that's different, this was about the actual services themselves, I think, I think it would be a different group, I think we would consider doing that, a facility study group, that would be different than this, I think, you know, we got this study, we have the plan, and we're trying to follow it to slowly implement the plan, and I think we've been having some conversations coming up in the next couple of weeks about that, but I don't know that this group needs to remain active. Cross them out. Energy Advisory Committee, no need for that.
Yeah, well, actually, to be fair, I don't need to be that person if anybody else would like to be that liaison. Okay.
It's true that I don't really spend enough time with Kate, so that would be a way to correct that.
So you could be on the beat.
Yeah, thank you.
But no, I think I would be very happy for Anne to continue.
Okay, that's fair. Well, I'm happy to do it, so.
All right. Green Mountain Transit Authority Advisory, again, this is, we have a place on, a designated seat on the board, Harold Garabedian has been the city's rep for a long time, has, I think, had active interest, we could check with him to see if he wants to continue, but last I knew, he's pretty engaged in that group.
That's something that I'm semi-interested in, should it ever become vacant in the future, but I'm happy to have him continue doing the work if he's.
Or you and Harold could share, you know.
You could talk to Harold.
You told me that the meetings were at 7:00 AM, so I'm not sure.
It's something that I'd be very interested in.
I'm not that interested, but I.
Maybe they're at eight and you believe it's, I don't know, it's, it's, it's not super, I mean, I think for the Chippewa County people, it's not so bad, they have breakfast, and they're eating, going away, for the, for the.
There is that.
But if you're interested, I'm sure you'd be happy to.
Formerly interested.
Harry shared in the scholarship, if you know more about that.
I enjoy being that person.
And I would prefer to be the most logical.
Yeah, being connected to the school, yeah. Yeah, so I'm going to stay there if I can.
Housing Task Force, we have vacancy in the Housing Task Force, we do have a council rep who has at times chaired the Housing Task Force.
Go for it.
Now, I am happy to keep doing this, but I heard Rosie, you were also interested.
I'm interested, I don't need to be on it, I'm happy to just go occasionally and talk with the Housing Task Force, but if nobody else wants to be on it, I can also be the appointee.
Well, I'm happy to be it. I think people, I understand that there are people on the Housing Task Force who would be very happy if it continues to be, if I'm on it.
Well, and I do hope, Rosie, you know, you get to go as you need.
Sounds good, me too.
And then the Housing Trust Fund, which is slightly different than the Task Force, which deals with the funding that we actually put in the budget each year, and then our rep.
Well, we haven't gotten to meet yet, so I would like to stay on there so that I can be part of at least one meeting.
As I was saying, it's usually only one or two per year, so if he wants to figure out how they want to, you know, what they want to send out for RPs, and then meet to figure out where the money goes.
And I'm also on that board now, I've been to, like, like you, one or two meetings or something.
I haven't been to any since I was appointed, so I don't know if I missed one, or.
No, I didn't.
You were appointed.
March of, well, it may have been May or June by the time I was.
I don't think they did anything last year. I mean, I don't know.
It'd have been allocated across, allocated across the state.
No reason to do it last year.
So, we really have two reps there, inadvertently, I suppose. But that's okay. Okay, great.
It's not burdensome.
Yeah, yeah, great.
It's probably good, actually. Investment Committee?
Again, it doesn't have to be me, I've been involved with conversations around environmental, social, and governance-related investing, but if anybody else is interested, it does not need to be me. Okay, I'm happy to keep it.
Give them away.
I know, right?
The Montpelier Alive Board, Montpelier Alive has a board of directors, a few years ago, they opened up a seat for council rep, and then at some point, it became a non-voting seat, I'm not exactly sure how that all happened, I think I know, but I'm not voting, sorry. But Jean Olson had been our liaison, attended the meetings, and obviously, she's known all the council, so it is a good group for us to have a contact with, that's what we want.
Is the mayor on by default? Is that why I'm there?
I don't know, maybe, I don't know why, I was, actually, you asked me.
I was a little surprised to see my name there.
You don't know.
Which is fine, I mean, I'm.
You're no longer on.
Okay.
So, it is a group we give money to, it is a group that we depend on a lot, it's a partnership, and obviously, we have a good relationship with, like, their offices right here in City Hall, and I think it's a positive.
I'd be interested in that one, I'm going to fight for a vote.
Montpelier Foundation is a group that takes donated money, basically, and has a charge to help take applications, it's specifically supposed for public infrastructure, or things that, Jean Olson was our rep, and has asked if she could continue, if she's interested in continuing, she's very engaged in the process, even I'd say, actually, you know, we were yesterday, we were following up on something, so, obviously, we're not required to do that, she's.
Is the seat allowed to go to a non-councilperson?
I think it's two city appointees.
Sorry.
After the council, Tom, same thing, was appointed. What happened, very briefly, is that the kind of whole thing went dormant for a while, and so the group tried to re-engage to get it going, and I think they've been successful. So, Tom and Jean, as councilmembers, said, we'll participate to try to keep the council presence to keep it going, I don't know, I, we could check with Tom, I don't know if he's still interested or not.
I might nominate Ashley. Well, we can go back.
I'm happy to have Jean continue on, I don't know how others feel.
Yeah, oh, that's fine.
Yeah, Jean is very clear that she wants to, Tom is the one I'm not 100% certain is still interested in.
Sure, that sounds, that sounds good.
Transportation Infrastructure Committee, that's the city's version of that, you just appointed someone to that tonight, non-husband, council rep, that is a designated council rep seat, been our rep since it started.
Yeah, I'd like to stay, invite anyone to come to any of our meetings, but I'd like to stay.
One Taylor Street Design Committee, actually, Donna had been on that as well, along with Jessica and John, so, along his bits and states.
It's a long time.
So, I'm interested in that one, if.
Okay, we're, it may never meet again.
If it ever meets again, I'm interested.
I am getting some connection, some push from former members who would like to get together at least once, to sort of see where things are, I think, the tension is that, you know, they had a lot of war, a war, beginning one, everything out, the tension is, you know, we're about to go out to bid on this and build this, and suddenly having it redesigned by committee, so, I've been looking for, what are some small decisions, and I don't mean to make it meaningless, but what are things that they, there's still room for people on, and what we want, I don't want to call, I'd like to call a meeting that was meaningless, but I also don't want it, you know, because I'm interested, so, maybe it's just a project. So, but what I gather is it would be Ian, Donna, and Rosie.
And you might just want to call it, at some point, when the project is like a ribbon-cutting kind of, or whatever, or maybe some information before that stage, just so people feel included. You can put it out as a party.
That's what that is.
I'm not sure that particular group is going to want to. NGD, Dan, or something, or John Snell, I don't know, one or two, one of the citizen reps is already.
Yep, yep, she's, yep, woman, yep.
Okay, Central Regional Public Safety Authority, we do have two reps to that, Councilmember Bate, former Councilmember Galaca, are the seats reps.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what the exact terms are.
Well, I sent you an email, actually, the Public Safety Authority terms are two years, so Tom's would have been 217 when he was reappointed to 219, so I'm the one that expires, it expires the same way as your seat does, is how it's lined up, so mine expired this year, and I'd like to continue, but if there's somebody else, I mentioned that to Ashley, although she didn't think she was still interested at this point, but, you know, express your desires.
Can you say a little more about it?
The Public Safety Authority, it's about the regionalization of all, ultimately, police, fire, ambulance, and dispatch, and we had originally, we had started out with a one-center facility, and then employee input, decided to have two facilities that could talk together, so we, redundancy in Berry and Montpelier, and then we got really far with that last December, and heard again from employees that they really feel like it needed one. So, we backed off, and now what we're looking at is getting a third party, both Montpelier and Berry would like to have a third party participating, and we have a memorandum of understanding out with the Capital West that Tony talked about, the chief talked about, Capital West is the part that's just the dispatching, but Capital West is part of a bigger, far mutual aid organization, so we're looking at, the Public Safety Authority is having a vote on the 16th with this mutual aid society to join the Public Safety Authority, and that would give us our third municipal group. And that would give us our third municipal group, hopefully to move forward to perhaps bond for improved communications. We need a major tower and I, I would have to have my paper in front of me. Tony could probably give you all the terms. But the fact that right now our towers, our radios are so impacted by not having the correct infrastructure, that we have talk over one another, we even get Canadian chatter, and so we really need to clean that up, but it's a major couple million dollars, right?
1.3.
1.3, okay, I overjudged it, but it's a big project. And the idea is by getting the mutual, far mutual aid involved, then everybody who has a contract with Montpelier now for dispatching would also have a commitment to help pay back that bonding versus right now, all the towns who have contracts can leave anytime they want. So it leaves you pretty vulnerable. So the Public Safety Authority felt this was a very firm way to bring in 18-some communities to join us in a regional sense for dispatching. And then from there, hopefully, it'll grow.
In a shorter version of that, or an additional version, I think Donna explained, so Donna explained what, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean that. She explained what they're working on. I was just trying to explain the authority itself. It's a quasi-municipal authority.
Yep.
Charter has been adopted by both Berry and Montpelier and approved by the legislature. Berry and Montpelier are the only two members. So each community has two appointed reps and then there are three representatives elected from amongst the two communities to serve. So it's an official board. It's not just a classic committee, but it's a board.
Yeah, but I wanted to get them enthusiastic about it.
And we actually had a recount or...
Yes.
Challenge to the elections of last year.
That's right. Sam, write-in, yep. Sam and Jim.
Yep. Both ran as write-ins, I think.
Yes. Yes, we were part of that recount, yes.
Right, right back there.
Yeah, for hours and hours.
So that's what that committee is. So the question is, do we reappoint Council Number B for two-year term?
I'll think about that.
So Donna, you're willing to stay on?
Right, we actually meet, that group meets twice a month. First and third Thursdays, 6:30, central Mont Chamber mostly, but we do move around, Berry to Montpelier.
You said you're meeting on the 16th. Is it April 16th or May 16th?
The mutual foreign aid vote on the 16th and hence we, I think we have, trying to get a committee with the, a meeting with the two mayors and the two city managers with the Regional Public Safety Authority. On the 17th, the day after the vote happens.
Tuesdays?
I have the dates, but I don't have the day of the week, sorry.
Oh, you just said they meet Thursday.
Well, we, our regular meeting is Thursday, but this was a special, they're voting on the 16th.
On the 16th of April?
Of May.
Of May.
They are distributing the memo of understanding, all of their 18-member towns have to vote on it. And then we were trying to set up a meeting on our regular third Thursday with a meeting with Berry and Montpelier's, new mayors and city managers.
Gotcha. So that would be 16th and 17th.
But I thought the 17th was already reached out to you too, so I may have misspoke.
17th, so you're trying to...
We do.
I just, I just was trying to get a sense of which month, actually, because it was 16th, next week.
May, 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 may.
So, but we can figure it out.
The Housing Task Force will, or even some, but I am curious what the two towns in the county are that aren't part of it.
So Berlin and Berry Town were originally scheduled to be, when this was first considered, it was proposed to be the four communities, the true regional hub. And in the process of developing that and discussions, Berry Town and Berlin dropped out of the process and went ahead with just the two cities. I think in most people's opinions, that was to detract from the project. It doesn't mean something can't happen for certain reasons, but we hope as far as a true regional system, and I think we don't love to get them back in somehow if we could. Water rate study committee, are we doing anything with that?
At this time, I don't expect a lot of lifting, however, depending on what happens with our wastewater treatment plant and those types of bigger issues, it may be appropriate to convene a committee to discuss rate structures to address that. Otherwise, I don't, you know, so it's really kind of, we should have someone on hand, but I don't expect much heavy lifting out of the, a meeting or two to address rates sometime around first of the fiscal year, so.
Usually that's what this role does, is screens the rate and makes recommendation of the council for water and sewer needs.
I would be interested.
There's one.
Three, two.
Helps.
All right, Connor.
The last one gets...
You know, the second time around, we assign.
I am not on these water committees.
Yeah, there you go.
We have many constituents who are...
I'm not even sure what the study committee is.
I was just looking at that. It should just be the TW Wood Board.
Right.
Yes, I think it got a rate study attached to it.
Yeah, right.
Well, the printed one just says Board, but the, one on the agenda is...
And I think the mayor is sort of by...
By default, a member. So I was the mayor's rep when I was a council member and, I mean, it's a great group. I enjoy being a part of it. I, the thing is, like, I just don't know if I'll be able to go consistently to the meetings, so just having, if there's anyone else who is interested, I mean, that's fine.
President of the council?
Well, I seem to be... I am interested, when are the meetings? Is it a regular?
They are regular and I should know on the top of my head when they meet. Don't remember. Oh, yeah, it's the first Tuesday of the month. But, yeah, I mean, if, if that, if that works. I mean, I know you also, if I, if I may, right, because I know you're also involved in the front, right, so does that, I guess my question is like, is that a conflict?
It's a good question. I'll, I'll say that I don't think it is, but I think that, that's based on my understanding that the Wood Gallery and the Front are different sorts of organizations in a lot of ways. I'll also mention that I am already on the TW Wood Committee, what is the committee that they have that helps choose shows and so on? So if that conflict of interest exists, I am already...
It's already happening.
In trouble about it. It hasn't caused any overt trouble with either organization so far that I have seen. I mean, we're both trying to sell art to the community, so in some way we are in competition. I think that neither organization depends heavily enough on art sales that there is significant actual competition between those two organizations.
Okay, and so until it comes, comes up...
Yes, I'm happy to respond to any challenges.
And you, I guess the other thing is like, if it does come up, just recuse yourself when, if it's ever even a question.
So Glenn is going to be the rep or...
Let's...
Mayor's designate?
That's, yes, mayor's designate, because I don't think I can recuse, or not recuse.
Same way John does it.
Right, exactly, yeah. Great, thank you.
Parking, this is going to be a big one this year, so.
I'm definitely still into it.
Me too.
Yeah, parking. Unless it fails once too.
We had two, I think, only because those are the only takers, you know, and we could have a third if there's interest. I do think, so I will tell you, I mean, obviously, until you really lay out your priorities, but we've challenged our staff to really look at this. I mean, we're going to have a lot of construction. We're going to have possibly a new parking garage. Should we look at expanding that, you know, on our own as, you know, a partnership, not just counting what we might do to, do more parking, do we, when everything's done, there's going to be a reduction in parking spaces in the community. So I, you know, I think we really, I think this is personally, I don't see, I don't have to, you know, not maybe, we have to deal with, I mean, I think we have to deal with it head-on with emergencies. We're already, we've got people following on this, unless we're told and may not do. And I think, so, all I'm saying is if there are council members interested in this, we're going to, we're going to be talking this year. So, you know, it's going to be followed more than just, you know, demand management is an important thing, but I think we're going to have to be looking at, it's real, is it going to be structured, is it going to be a train, is it going to be shuttles? I mean, it's going to have to, it's going, we're going to be looking toward...
So I just have a question about it. When, I've had some recent conversations with Sue about different stakeholders. Do we have to formalize this committee a little bit more? We called it together, short-term, to have an immediate...
Right.
Working group on looking at some of the things the staff presented to us. But if we're really going to deal with all the, you know, over 300 or more displaced cars during the 219 construction, I feel there needs to be major stakeholders there, employers, as well as GMTA, as well as...
So we agree and we can reach out to them. We, we had a committee that was established with, had set, we had state of Vermont, we had Vermont Employee's Union, we had, you know, downtown businesses, we had, you know, GMT was involved, I'm trying to remember who else was...
Right, the original parking committee, I got you.
One by one, people just started dropping off and it was left kind of to city staff and folks. So if we're going to be nimble, we need to be able to move. I think inviting people to participate would be great. I also think, you know, they've got to, they've got to show up, too. That's what the challenge is.
I can picture, because there is a, really a finite task that we are looking at because of all this, you know, the infrastructure changes that are happening, I almost want to think of this as a task force or like a working group, rather than necessarily a standing committee of the council. And so I could also picture us, you know, as needed, saying, you know, hey, Vermont State Employees Union, please come to this meeting. You know, we're not asking for a long-term commitment.
Right, right.
Maybe, you know, come to this meeting, see if we need to, if you need to be at this meeting again and then, so maybe as needed.
My sense would be this group gets together, soon identifies the players that we want to turn the loop and we communicate with them and say, "This is going on, you know, here's who we are, here's what we're going to send you, if you want to come, we'll tell you when the meetings are." But these issues, we'll figure out. We got really bogged down with those groups last time.
Well, just that the Sustainable Montpelier Committee had a transportation group and there were a lot of good employers there and many of them expressed interest in just initially a task force to look at the whole picture. Some of them are thinking of shuttles themselves, but we're trying to integrate it and work with it as many resources, public and private. So I'd like to have some initial meetings and, and see what everybody can chip into the pot, so to speak, for funds as well as ideas. And then, you're right, you may need a smaller group.
John, I'm on board with all of that. I just feel like it's...
Yep, we need to do it soon.
Yep, yep.
Does anyone want to, want in on this or is just I and I? Okay, great.
Ashley might really be interested in this one. Well, again, because ultimately, I feel what we set up for this temporary displacement, a lot of it's going to become long-term, has the potential. And she's very much, I felt Ashley has expressed interest again in trying to make things more available to everybody, no matter what your job, day or night, et cetera, so.
Yeah, so the city has been...
Oh, addresses.
Yeah, we don't, we don't, we're not as compliant with the E911 law as we would like to be. That's going to take a really long time. I mean, Ashley and I were looking into what it would take to get us to that or make progress on that front and I think we're, we're making some progress. I don't know that we need a committee, so, I mean, that's something that, I mean, she and I were interested in separately and we can continue to move on that, so.
And ultimately came to the council and the progress process was laid out and all of that. We do have, we've already got our first conundrum, right, was we're looking at this, if we, if we move quickly, then we will be talking about 61 Taylor and not one Taylor.
Oh. Maybe we should change the name of the project. Then we can get the committee together, just...
There you go.
But we got special permission to make it one because it, the post office code, it wasn't, don't you remember? This was a big deal to make it one Taylor Street.
I do remember that it was.
Yeah. You can't take that number away, Bill.
You ought to be in some of our internal meetings.
Maybe that's not the first priority for renaming.
Well, before people move in.
Before people move in.
That's true. Better to do it before they're there.
Back to the original funding pageant called Jeffords Plaza or something.
Just love everybody's signature. Jack, that's amazing. I can't read it, but it looks to me.
Oh, yeah.
See it?
Okay.
Guys, just circling back, I, I might talk to Sue about, a little more about the ADA Committee to see if I might be interested in doing that. Seems like something important to have somebody on.
That's how we roll here.
Okay, so I also just want to flag a couple of things. I know this is maybe something that we can take up later, you know, after we've done some strategic planning amongst ourselves, but a couple other groups that I am interested in, I mean, I've been talking about this before, but just thinking about the data that's available to the public from the city and also, I mean, I've been meeting with some city staff recently just about the website and just, you know, just all things digital. And so that may be a group, potentially, if there's some discrete tasks that we think may be appropriate to invite some other expertise in. I could picture that as being a group that maybe we want to open up, but I don't want to do that right now and have some more conversation about that. But I imagine that that may take, may take some, some more people power, but we'll see. And then the other group that I, I'm not sure if this deserves to be a group, but I, a little while ago, I had mentioned, you know, I'm interested in reconsidering some of the art in this room and the pictures out in the hall even. And since then, you know, it's come up like, well, why, why is the bell where it is? I don't know what that would take to move the bell, but, you know, these are conversations we can have. And so I can picture that as being a group, potentially. I don't, like I said, I don't want to be the, the person who's making the decision about, oh, well, you know, this art but not that art. It seems like it should be a group process, yeah.
Well, if this is a group that's about, it sounds like you're talking about the physical plant of this building. One thing that I'm, I've been interested in for many years is looking into what it would take to get, get the bell in the tower working again.
Well, it's a good question. Yeah.
So I throw that onto the mission.
So I can shed some light on that.
We can also, we don't have to do it now.
Oh, this is a funny story.
Is it? Okay, all right.
So the bells, you know, worked and rang on the hour by the number of bells. And we started getting numerous complaints about, particularly the midnight, the 12 bells from downtown residents, that they've been quite loud. And it was pretty loud and so there was that. And so we were having some discussion about what to do about it and the bell been kind of rusted and broke. And so the view of the city at the time was, well, that was serendipity, problem solved, and it hasn't rung since. And we don't get any more complaints about the noise. So really, it's, I'm sure it's just a question of getting the handle fixed. I don't think it's a major, I mean, I don't know what the cost, it might be some fabrication or whatever, but it's not an insurmountable problem. It was a somewhat conscious decision to not fix it because of the complaints about the noise.
So it's something we can talk about.
I always used to enjoy having the, sort of the mental exercise of trying to keep track of both sets of bells ringing at the same time, here in the courthouse. Because they were precisely...
They weren't quite in sync.
People that lived down here didn't appreciate that quite as much.
One possibility is that we, to make that a committee right now, are there people that, that would be interested in the internal aesthetics? Yes, one, two, okay, so maybe the three of us can...
Call it like the city hall...
Beautification.
Oh, gosh.
Lady Bird Johnson.
We could call it the balcony.
Okay.
Doors and other things.
So, um, take the what?
The capital cake.
That model of the Capitol is a cake.
Oh.
The top of a cake.
What?
Yes.
I did not realize.
Never read the sign next to it.
I apparently have never read the sign.
That is worth talking about.
We have tried to give that to them, including back to Necky where it came from.
Well, that's like the school gave you, the, the city, the bell. The bell was down at the school, the lobby for the longest time.
The bell actually gets a lot, like, people climb on it, gets a lot of attention, people take pictures of it.
Sure, okay, so.
Yes, go ahead.
Not to prolong this unnecessarily, but since we mentioned Necky, I, I had a conversation actually earlier this morning about the possibility of having a Montpelier welcoming committee. For example, if a new batch of Necky students comes in, or a VCFA residency or something, some volunteer or representative of the city could just show up and say, hey, welcome, you know, here's who we are and so on. I don't know if there's any other interest in that, but I thought I'd throw it in.
Could we, could we flush that out a little bit? Can we bring that up another, like, next time, too?
Absolutely.
Is that okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, let's, let's talk about that.
We've done various, I know the police have occasionally met with them to talk to them about, is that the parking ban?
Yeah, we would meet, the new classes, they would call us, and...
Oh, yeah.
Hard drive.
Come on, come on, just a thing.
And we'd talk about everything from parking, a little logistical issues there, and safety, and what the resources are like, and what's available to them, so, that, you know, their model has changed quite, quite a bit, too, so, kind of got away from that. But that, used for years and years, that was a standard protocol between the department and the city. We have not done that, we have called it a compromise.
Let's, let's talk more about that. Okay. Okay, I think that's it for that end, and lots of people have other things they want to... Okay, great. All right, so council reports, I think last time we started with Donna, if I recall, so let's...
It's right.
So council reports is a time when you give us an update on anything happening in the city, or, really, you can say anything you want to.
You can talk to constituents, or you can pass.
I don't have anything to report, but I do want to say that I know this council went through a very difficult process last week, and, and heard from a lot of people, and I appreciate the vote and the support. Since, since I was appointed, I've had a number of people that I run into who ask me, well, are you excited? And the answer is, yes, I am. And so I appreciate being here, and I'm looking forward to it.
I have a couple of things, and in line of just what Jack said, I want to apologize for any confusion, and I'm going to read it to make sure I state it right this time, that I may have caused by using the terms that were construed as referring to political parties. My point was that town meeting vote, voting data could be examined differently than just first and second place. Since four hundred and eighty-seven votes were not cast for Alex, those votes could be understood as votes for positions that differed from Alex. I unfortunately use the term conservative and liberal to describe that difference. It was not my intention to use those words in the political sense. City council has not and does not characterize itself or its actions according to political party labels, at least not in the four going on five years that I've been here. It has been and will continue to be nonpartisan in all its deliberation. And so I just apologize to this council and to our constituents across the city that that was not clear, that when I stated it before and created such a reaction, so. Forward, I'll be more careful what I say. But I did also want to mention that this week is National Dispatchers Week, and so if you have a chance, you can stop by the police department and say, thank you, they would appreciate it. And, just one other thing? Doesn't matter. I will, I will remember it later.
Thank you, Donna.
All right, I'm still plugging away on my Sister City project here. Actually got a pretty big response with some people with strong feelings about what the Sister City should be. So with the council's blessing, I would like to maybe convene a little working group to develop a process to get some public input on this, and maybe bring it back to the council at some point. Some people have some very meaningful connections with other countries, I think others might just like pasta or something, and want to partner with it, so. So we'll flesh it out and come back on that one.
Do we have more than one?
Yeah.
Is, I just have a question, I mean, if this is like a working group, does this need to be an official group of the city, or you just want to, like, have some further conversations?
Just go have some coffee, come back, toss some ideas around.
Okay, great.
First, I want to welcome Jack McCullough to the council, good to have you here, and also thank the other applicants to the position and the residents who spoke up. I'm glad that we had the degree of participation that we did. I also want to say again, and I'm going to say this every council meeting, tomorrow morning, Thursday morning, I will be at Open Hands Cafe in the Episcopal Church Parish Hall from eight-thirty to nine-thirty, and every Thursday. If anyone has anything they want to talk to me about, that's the time to come in, that's one time. Yeah, we talk about all kinds of things, or nothing, that's what I think. And I also want to appreciate the fact that we're coming up on Greenup Day, and I'm looking forward to doing that, and looking forward to seeing a lot of the city out there. I usually don't last very long, I get tired really fast, but I will do my best, so, thank you.
Great, so I also want to welcome Jack, glad to have you, and then, so I just wanted to make a note that I had a meeting today with the investment committee. I thought it was a great meeting, we talked about our options for moving forward with socially responsible investing practices. So I'm going to be coming back to the council probably pretty soon to have a little bit more of a robust discussion, I think sometime in the near future, the, I think we said the twenty-fifth, right? That's the hope, but, you know, depending on how full our agenda is, so we, we may need to weigh in on what, what it is that we would like to see, and we'll have some options, I think, to, to deliberate over, so. That's, that's it for me.
Just a quick update on the charter change process, I was wondering where our charter changes were, and it seemed like there was a little bit of a snafu in the State House. They didn't get crafted into a bill and supposedly got sent to Senate GovOps instead of House GovOps, so. But anyways, I got Warren and Mary on it, they found it, things are moving along swimmingly, I actually talked to somebody at Ledge Council just a couple days ago. It hasn't shown up on the agenda yet, if it's not on the agenda for next week. You know, Warren's on the committee, I may nudge him a little bit, I might just go talk to the chair, I have a good relationship with Maida, so anyways, no reason to worry at this point. I would also mention that the community meeting on the non-citizen, the possibility of non-citizen voting in city elections has been bumped to the request of a few people, so it's, instead of next week, it's going to be Tuesday, May first, in this room, at seven o'clock, and I'm trying to get the word out far and wide about that.
John, I had a question about that. I can, and I don't know what the law is, but I can imagine that potentially there might be a quorum of this council wanting to attend that meeting. Would that mean that we would have to warn that as a public meeting?
Boy.
I don't think so, I was actually looking at that recently, and there's a specific provision in the clause that says that if the, if council members are attending another public meeting, it's not theirs.
Right, and this isn't being called under the auspices of the council, yeah.
It's not being convened for the purpose of council doing business.
Well, that's true, it's not business, right? There's not anything, I think you were here last week, my recommendation was not to worry about any kind of council action and let the process play out. So that's right, there's no business on the table, so.
You're not there to deliberate, deliberate a council, you're there as interested citizens to listen to whatever's being said.
So I think that'd be fine.
I think you're fine, you can double check that, but I'm pretty sure, because I was doing a lot of digging on the open meeting law this week, so.
And it's, however, I would brag on myself a little bit, I just pocketed another cert, I'm now a Certified Network Defense Architect, and I just want to thank Bill a lot, he's been very supportive of me doing creative juggling with my own budget, my own departmental budget, and helping out with some of his departmental budget to do a lot of this professional development work I've been doing, which has been, it's been getting me a lot of attention. I just got, and I hope that reflects well on the city, I just got an invitation from the Center for Technology and Civic Life, one of fourteen people who got invited from around the country, a bunch of different states, they're going to fly me to Chicago and put me up and be part of a working group on best practices for modernizing the voter registration process, and just all of a sudden, people are knocking on my door, and I just really appreciate the, the support that's been able to make that happen.
Congratulations, yeah.
I'd like to announce that John Odom's new title is Network Ninja. I don't have many, I don't have much, actually, just a reminder that we did schedule a tour for next Wednesday night for the Public Works Department and the Water Treatment Plant, those are, that's a lot to take in, just to know. Two members can't attend, so we're going to try to get those two scheduled at a different time together, and then I think we just got something from, for the wastewater plant as well, Water Resource Recovery Plan, be time for that presentation, so. Those are coming up. At our next meeting, we will be going, in addition to DPW, we'll also be talking about TIF and possible tax stabilization applications, we could have some real conversation next week, in addition to some community stuff, so. Anyways, for that, that's all I have.
So I think that is it. So without objection, consider the meeting adjourned. It's not quite ten o'clock.